Is this?
Type of sharing with Matt?
Jim, like Peter.
What will the company share over?
Really? Somebody gave me a business idea first day or something. We should do that. Men be to do it.
Okay, all. Is everyone ready? Cameras on? Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, September fifteenth City Council Work Session. Wanted to call the meeting to order. Thank you for all of our guests for joining us tonight. We've got a full house. Can we start with roll, please?
Yes, Mayor, I'm gonna roll.
Roll call for council, planning commission and EDA.
Starting with council. Ms. Connolly?
Here.
Ms. Downs?
Here.
Ms. Flynn?
Here.
Ms. Hiscott?
Here.
Mr. Snyder is absent. Ms. Underhill?
Here.
And Mayor Hardy?
Here.
And for the planning commission?
You want me to do your participation now or after everybody's gone?
If I can just do the roll call and then we'll do that. Chair Comma?
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens?
Here.
Mr. Krasner? Ms. Freelandr?
Here.
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Kravinsky?
Here.
Thank you. And Mr. Polinski? And then for the EDA? Chair Lickenhouse?
Not here yet.
Not yet. We'll watch for him. Mr. Coyle?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Kresnik? Ms. Dove? And Mr. Williams? And Mr. Brangman?
Here.
Okay, that would then lead us back to the mayor for the virtual motion.
We have a motion for Ms. Underhill to participate.
Yes. Ms. Underhill, would you identify your remote location and reason for participation by electronic means?
I am in New Haven, Connecticut for a work conference.
I move that City Council approve electronic participation by Justine Underhill in this meeting for personal reasons pursuant to City Council's adopted policy.
Second.
Down's on the second. Call roll, please.
Ms. Connolly?
Yes.
Ms. Downs?
Yes.
Ms. Flynn?
Yes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Hiscott?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder's absent. Mayor Hardy?
Yes.
That passes. Thank you, council.
Great. So before we get started, again, welcome to our guests. Thank you to the planning commission and EDA for joining us. Mr. Lickenhouse is now present. We could note that in the minutes. We wish Dave best wishes he's not here tonight due to medical reasons. And then before we jump into our agenda, I just wanted to make a note that I think we've said this in the past and it's unfortunate we have to say it again, but that political violence really has no place here or anywhere. I think especially tonight when we're gathering both the council, the planning commission, EDA. I think this is a great example of how we can have civic discourse without fear of violence and have disagreements and healthy disagreements and have productive conversations. And Falls Church is always a great example of that. So I'm proud to serve with all of you and to be part of the conversation. Okay, with that, I know we have guests in the audience as well. And so I don't know whether we want to invite also the guests to join us between Henry and other staff members, Wyatt, if we can make room at the table. I know that many people are here for the tap. So I don't want people to feel like they have to discuss from the audience. I'll let you take it from here and decide how to orchestrate.
Well, thank you, Mayor Hardy and members of council, members of the Economic Development Authority, members of the planning commission staff. Welcome to tonight's work session. And for those that are not at the table, I'm sure they will not be shy. If they have something to add to the conversation, they'll raise their hand and be able to speak up. Tonight, we want to sort of take on board the information and the analysis that was provided to us through the Urban Land Institute's Technical Assistance Panel. And we're joined by Emily Bazemore, who is our staff lead for organizing this effort with the Urban Land Institute. And we're also joined by Mark Gazda, who was with Urban Land Institute, who led the effort. And I'm very glad to have you back with us again tonight. Just a couple of thoughts for the City Council. Just to remind everyone, the Gordon Road Triangle is a twenty acre area in the city, five acres of which are owned by the city. The city is considering the future of its property. We've commissioned a feasibility study to imagine, one, to gather some data and assess our current operations at the Robert L. Goff Operations Center. And at the same time, the private sector is considering its future in the Gordon Road Triangle. And so we brought in, we asked the Urban Land Institute to come in and help us with an additional perspective, an additional lens into thinking about the future and the opportunities that are in this important area of the city. And so we want to talk about their findings, their recommendations, and we sort of compare them back to some of their foundational documents, which include the West End Area Plan and the Fox Architects feasibility study for the Robert Goff Center. Those are two kind of foundational pieces that the city had already carried forward. So we'll inform those plans with the help of what the Urban Land Institute is bringing to the table with their perspective. We want to distill down some of their key points. We also want to bring to the council's attention, the Byer family has a future land use map application pending before Fairfax County. Fairfax County has been sharing information with us at the staff level. We want to share with the council what those conversations are and our joint commitment, the city and the county, to think about this area together in a coordinated way. And the ULI TAP has some recommendations on how we can do that in a structured way. Our thinking from a staff's perspective in terms of what's expected from the council, I think we want to onboard this information tonight, digest it and think about it in the context when the City Council organizes its two-year work plan in January. Think about kind of where this will fit in with other priorities. From a staff's perspective, we believe it is a very important part of the city and there are very important public and private things that merit our attention and some structured assignments of work that could come out of tonight's discussion. But we think that we'll flesh that out probably in January in the new council's retreat. So with that introduction, I'll turn it over to Emily for a few slides to help us kind of organize her thinking about this latest effort with the Urban Land Institute.
Thank you, Wyatt. Good evening, planning commission, city council and EDA. My name is Emily Bazemore. I am a senior planner and I worked on the TAP back in January twenty twenty-five. I am joined by Mark Gazda from ULI, who worked alongside the city sponsor team on the effort. All right, so next slide, please. Okay, so a little bit about the TAP and what a TAP is. And before we even get to that, I just want to lay the groundwork here that in May of twenty twenty-four, the city applied to participate in the ULI TAP program as a key step in accomplishing the following goal. Develop a plan for the Gordon Road Triangle that includes a long-term solution to the city's property yard. This goal is also a city council strategic initiative. So a little bit about ULI TAPS and what they are. So ULI TAP or ULI's Technical Assistance Panel Program provides expert multidisciplinary advice on land use and real estate issues facing public agencies like the City of Falls Church and nonprofit organizations in the metropolitan Washington region. ULI Washington conducts two-day panels or TAPS, offering objective and responsible advice to local decision makers on a variety of land use and real estate issues, which can range from site-specific projects to public policy questions. The City of Falls Church has actually participated in a couple of TAPS over the years, including the TAP for the West End School Related Parcels back in twenty fourteen, a mini TAP on the Gordon Road Triangle in twenty fifteen, and the TAP for the Eastern Gateway back in twenty eighteen. Past TAPS have been used to inspire future planning efforts, including small area plans, development proposals and transportation projects. Elements of these TAPS have been incorporated into our West End Plan that was adopted in twenty twenty and the East End Plan that was adopted in twenty twenty-three. Next slide, please. All right. So this map is looking at the surrounding context in the West End. I think it's important that before diving into the study area that we just take a larger zoomed-out look at the West End area. So the West End is home to the ten-acre West Falls Development Project that consists of over a million square feet of residential space, commercial space and office space. It's adjacent to the city's new Meridian Hill High School and Mary Ellen Henderson Middle School. Just across from the study area, the Gordon Road Triangle, is Federal Realty's Burt and Broad Shopping Center, which was renovated back in twenty twenty-one. Further along Route Seven to the right of the triangle are the Founder's Road Developments. As you can see, much of the West End surrounding the Gordon Road Triangle has experienced redevelopment and reinvestment in recent years. Also, when looking at this map, I just want to call attention to the fact that the railroad cottages are just to the south of the Gordon Road Triangle as well as the W N O D Trail. You can also see the West Falls Church Metro on this map. All right, next slide, please. Okay, so this map is looking specifically at the study area. So the study area for the TAP is the Gordon Road Triangle, which is part of the city's Planning Opportunity Area Number Four. The boundaries of the city POAs or Planning Opportunity Areas provide a guide as to where the city is promoting revitalization. Specific recommendations for the POAs are included in the city's small area plans. The Gordon Road Triangle, as Wyatt said, is approximately twenty acres in size. It is zoned primarily M1 light industry, with the exception of the square parcel where the property yard main building is located, which is zoned R1A. This area is zoned R1A by default as a result of the twenty thirteen boundary adjustment. So you can see towards the left side of the triangle where that R1A parcel is. The triangle is bounded by West Broad Street or Route Seven to the north, the W N O D Trail to the south, and Fairfax County and Shreve Road to the west. The city is the largest landowner in the Gordon Road Triangle, owning around five acres, followed by the Byer family, who owns just under five acres in the triangle. Next slide, please. Thank you. All right, so the following are core goals of the Gordon Road Triangle TAP. Number one, identify strategies for reinvestment in the Gordon Road Triangle. Number two, explore the feasibility of a public-private financing structure for the operations yard specifically. Number three, utilize and create additional multimodal connections offered by the existing transportation network, which includes the trail, the W N O D Trail, the West Falls Church Metro rail station, to ultimately enhance walking, biking and rolling in the area. And finally, number four, develop a process, identify capital and reimagine the current site for a successful, long-term repositioning. These goals are rooted in the themes of the questions that we included as part of the city's application to the TAP program. This application was shared as a staff report attachment for this item. Such themes included public-private partnerships, transportation and connectivity, thoughtful strategic land use and more, all of which are significant as we think about reimagining the Gordon Road Triangle. Next slide, please. All right, so this is looking at our TAP timeline. So you can see that we submitted our application all the way back in May of twenty twenty-four and we found out that we received the award back in July of twenty twenty-four. And I believe early fall, we began planning with the Urban Land Institute for this event and the event happened on January thirtieth and thirty-first of twenty twenty-five. So the first day of the event included a sponsor presentation. So we got the panel familiar with the study area, went over things like current land use and zoning and those application questions and goals again. Then the panel had the opportunity to actually tour the study area on foot. So they walked along the Gordon Road Triangle, walked through the property yard site, along Shreve Road, down Gordon Road, all up into Broad Street. Then they had stakeholder roundtables, which were attended by around, I think, sixty or more stakeholders, which was incredibly impressive, a great turnout. And then following those stakeholder roundtables, the panel began their deliberation. And all of this happened on the first day of the event. The second day, they kick off with a final deliberation by the panel. So really looking to hone in on those final recommendations. And then we received that final panel presentation of recommendations that afternoon. And I see very many familiar faces that were there as part of that presentation. So that was the event. It's a two-day event where we get really specific advice on these land use and real estate issues. And then there's a period where ULI turns these recommendations into a more robust report. That report was delivered in June, late June twenty twenty-five. And here we are now in early fall, September fifteenth, digesting the report, doing a page turn and looking at the different recommendations. All right, next slide, please. So the main product of this TAP panel was a framework plan for reimagining the Gordon Road Triangle. And I included a quote from the final report because I think it does a good job of explaining what this framework plan can do. So this framework plan is intended as an overall framework rather than a master plan or precise rendering of what a plan could look like. It's been designed for maximum flexibility to take into account the multiple stakeholders, including the areas, existing businesses and property owners. Next slide, please. All right, so kicking off with this map that kind of shows the phasing for the framework plan. So the framework plan for the Gordon Road Triangle takes a phased approach through a prescribed order that would accommodate the existing land ownership and unlock the city's needs first. It sets the tone that the Gordon Road Triangle retains its light industrial character but still has a people-first message that acknowledges many people's livelihoods depend on the services that are performed here in the Gordon Road Triangle. The panel recommended that unlocking redevelopment and improvement of the city's parcels first, retaining critical city services that are housed in the Gordon Road Triangle, specifically at the city's property yard. The goal being that by tackling the city's services first, it can be done upfront and then there would still be an option for maximum flexibility for the rest of the triangle and further reinvestment. The panel determined that the urgent nature of the city's needs should prioritize the city's operations yard expansion into a new public services center as a catalyst for change in the Gordon Road Triangle. The rest of development will follow. So looking at phase one, it's really about unlocking reinvestments and redevelopment on the city's parcels. So building a public services center and even modernizing the homeless shelter. The goal of this consolidated public service center is to utilize the city's property, consolidate the building footprint and create a positive relationship to street and open spaces. Additionally, a potential rezoning of the city parcel that's currently zoned R1A could be rezoned concurrently with the redevelopment of the city's parcels into this public service center as these two sites were recommended to be initial steps that the city could take for redevelopment in the Gordon Road Triangle. Also, as part of phase one, we can think about additional space for things like affordable housing, a training center that could house an apprenticeship program for public works trades and disciplines, shared community hubs or gathering spaces and even incubator programs. When looking at phase two, which is on the blue in the map, so specifically looking at the upper portion of the map to begin with, the panel recommends retaining current uses that are there, such as auto retail and auto body shops. Retaining these existing businesses are important as they, the services provided there in the Gordon Road Triangle are critical again to folks' livelihoods. In general, during the TAP process, stakeholders express an interest in keeping a meaningful amount of industrial use in the triangle because the City of Falls Church wants to have access to the public work system and it's in line with how the area is already zoned, light industry. Also, looking down further on the screen to the south, there's another blue area. So this is actually labeled, it's kind of hard to see, but phase two or phase three. And this focuses on establishing a relationship between the Gordon Road Triangle and the W N O D Trail, especially through the implementation of new green spaces and connections. For instance, improving the W N O D connection to the Gordon Road Triangle at the base of the bike and pedestrian bridge offers the opportunity to provide more open space and recreational amenities along the W N O D frontage on the Gordon Road Triangle site. The area could be connected with the parallel slower share use path. The panel identified the value in enhancing this corner of the study area with trail forward active retail. These could be things like bike shops, cafes, breweries and more. They also recommended the preservation of some existing buildings on the site, whether permanently or as like an interim condition to recognize the history of the site and maintain unique character. We could look into adaptive reuse to add amenities that would benefit the neighborhood and residents connected to the trail. And finally, phase three, this is shown in purple on the map. Here we see the introduction of centralized parking with spaces for buses on the ground level. This would of course include like a taller profile to park those school buses, city vehicles, a secured impound lot and also parking spaces for customers. Mixed-use development along Broad Street and multifamily housing could also occur in this phase. And this housing could be market rate or even senior housing. Next slide, please. So here you can see all of the recommendations come together. I think this slide also does a nice job of showing that added green space and even the expanded tree canopy coverage. I also think it's important to emphasize that the recommendations seen on the map here are reflective of key themes expressed during the stakeholder roundtable interviews. Themes included things like affordable and workforce housing, existing business preservation, retaining industrial uses, adding that green space, retaining the homeless shelter, adding additional neighborhood amenities, enhancing connectivity and safety improvements and then adding parking. Next slide, please. All right, so this slide looks at our final ULI TAP report, its key recommendations and how they align with the West End Small Area Plan. So to begin with, there's the realignment of Gordon Road. And as you go through this table, you'll see that they're organized as recommendations that show up in both. And then as you work down, you'll see that there are some recommendations that only show up in the top report. So realignment of Gordon Road, this is something that we see in both the TAP report and the West End Small Area Plan. Both recommend implementing a grid of streets and also aligning Gordon Road and Burt Street to provide that better connectivity. This is also something that's in our comprehensive plan, this particular strategy of realigning Gordon Road and Burt Street. Continuing to work down the list, I do want to note that the West End Small Area Plan does advocate for affordable housing, but I do think it advocates as for the West End as a whole and not specifically within the Gordon Road Triangle. In fact, for the Gordon Road Triangle, it recommends housing above active retail, specifically, I believe, senior housing, which we saw as a recommendation here. And then also just diversity and housing types. So I believe there's lower density housing or, yeah, in the West End Small Area Plan. But I think what we're looking at here with the TAP report is calling for a specific affordable housing building built within the Gordon Road Triangle. So there is a difference there and I wanted to make that distinction before going through the rest of the chart. Also, we have things like establishing the apprenticeship program. That's something that is unique to the TAP report. There are a lot of public works functions that could translate over into an apprenticeship program that teaches trades and also auto body works and auto body repair trades. So I think there's a good opportunity there as well. And that's not something that shows up in the Small Area Plan, but something that shines in the TAP report. Also establishing a permanent supportive housing program. Also establishing a permanent supportive housing program, that is something that is unique to the top report and that was not in the Small Area Plan. Other things that show up in both are creating more green spaces, improving traffic and pedestrian, safety surrounding Broad Street or Route seven, and then of course enhancing bike pad connections to the trail. Next slide, please. All right, so this slide looks at funding strategies. So the panel had several recommendations for the city to explore public-private partnerships for investment and emphasized several recommendations that would reduce the city's financial risk and taxpayer liability. To finance the vision for the area, which includes light industrial uses, diverse housing options, shared parking and more, the panel recommended a diversified and innovative financing approach that leverages both conventional and alternative instruments. I just want to look at the right-hand side of the screen here. We have the various financial instruments that are noted on page twenty of the report, so zero coupon bonds, industrial revenue bonds, and Islamic bonds and equity instruments. Partners are also noted as part of the table here on page twenty of the report. Now I want to hop over to the left-hand side of the screen and talk a little bit about synthetic leasing for asset development as well as the low-income housing credit incentives that are noted here. So synthetic leasing for asset development, this is a lease structure financing mechanism where the city would retain operational control over key infrastructure such as maker spaces, public services, industrial parks, and housing while keeping the asset off balance sheet. This structure attracts private sector capital while optimizing tax benefits and reducing the impact on the city's debt capacity. Now looking at the low-income housing tax credit incentives, here affordable housing ensures that people of all incomes can live, grow, and work together, making the distinct or the district a true destination for all. Low-income housing credit incentives attract private investment, helping to create quality housing that supports a diverse and vibrant community. There are a number of firms in the Washington area that regularly undertake and design in the construction and financing of public-private ventures. The panel noted in their report that they are confident that a well-structured request for proposals or RFP for a new public services center and other recommendations in the report will elicit responses from several qualified companies. Next slide, please. All right, now looking at implementation. So the panel recommended that to create synergy between the city and the landowners in the triangle, the city of Falls Church should take initial steps to revision their two parcels and begin a catalyst for the larger Gordon Road Triangle redevelopment. So they recommended three phases of implementation. Step one being finalizing the reinvestment vision. Here we would want to define the city's long-term reinvestment strategy that aligns with our stakeholders, to develop a compelling presentation that would showcase the plan for the area, and also to conduct a parking needs assessment study to evaluate the demand for a shared parking facility in the Gordon Road Triangle. Step two is engaging private and public partners. Here we want to connect with capital placement firms specializing in long-term investors to reduce risk, increase cash flows, and increase private participation. We also want to establish a relationship with public partners like Fairfax County, the Commonwealth of Virginia, and even federal partners to create impact for the greater area. Want to call attention to the right-hand side of the screen, the image that exemplifies that in order to move or row, a plan for the Gordon Road Triangle Ford, the city should be working as part of a team with these core stakeholder groups, so property owners, businesses, residents in the county. The report even recommended identifying a champion for the area to effectively coordinate amongst these various stakeholder groups as we plan for future reinvestments. Finally, step three, grow the Gordon Road Triangle into a model district. We want to create a diverse, vibrant, mixed-use hub as a catalyst for broader city reinvestment. Also want to leverage industrial, residential, and commercial synergies here. As a note in the report, the panel recommends that when executing the plan and going through these steps of implementation, it's important to transition from vision to implementation with clearer milestones into aligned city policies, funding strategies, and development partners to create a successful public-private partnership in the Gordon Road Triangle. Next slide, please. All right, this is my last slide, and I just wanted to just touch on ongoing projects and initiatives related to the Gordon Road Triangle. So first might look kind of familiar, our update to chapter eight. So one of the core areas for this chapter eight update, community building blocks, community facilities, infrastructure, utilities, and public services chapter of the comp plan, is focusing on facility planning. City facilities like the property yard and the homeless shelter are highlighted in this chapter. Both of these facilities have received specific recommendations in the tap, particularly around the idea of a public services center. When thinking about the future of these facilities and others too, as part of the update to chapter eight, the tap report and its recommendations can be used as an aspirational resource. The second project is the Fairfax County Site-Specific Plan Amendment Planning Study. So earlier this year, the county received a nomination for the consolidation of the buyer properties at West Broad Street and Shreve Road. The nomination proposes an option for a mixed-use redevelopment predominantly consisting of multifamily residential uses with ground floor activated retail and service uses. The nomination also includes a new future Route seven parallel street, which could potentially facilitate a new east-west street grid. In June, the Fairfax County Board of Supervisors authorized the study of the area as part of their two thousand and twenty-five County Comprehensive Plan Amendment Work Program. As this planning effort begins, inter-jurisdictional cooperation and coordination will play a key role. Some considerations for redevelopment in the area will include coordination with the city to address necessary services, multimodal connections to transit in the trail, and establishing appropriate compatible uses with surrounding areas. The recommendations from the top can serve as a guide alongside the uses resources like the West End Small Area Plan as well when planning for future, planning for the future of the Gordon Road Triangle as part of this planning process with the county. And then finally, I just want to highlight that the top report can also be used as a reference document when considering future CIP projects, budgeting, and even work plan initiatives. All right, I think that was my last slide, so if you go to the next slide, it should be our Q and A. Thank you all, and Mark is joining me for a Q and A as well. We're looking forward to your, your questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily, for that very thorough report. And I was just going to preface that we have a great history with ULI. So I think it was probably ten years ago that we had actually done our own, the first tap, I think, in the city that actually catalyzed the high school redevelopment in West Falls, and so we're excited about taking on this one with you all. So thank you. I'm going to open it up to actually our guests first, the planning commission and EDA. If you all, and we'll start with planning commission. If you all have comments or questions, take us off.
I have a few, but I wanted to know if I wanted to invite Ms. Friedlander because you were our tribute and you participated in the ULI tap. Did you, did you want to start us off? You want me to go ahead? Okay. All right, well, I'm, you know, I'm excited about this, the vision for this area. I agree that, you know, this is a great location for, for sort of like multimodal transportation, being so close to major transit routes and the metro. I think it is important to think about how we can maintain some of the sort of like industrial flavor of that area. I think about places like Scott's Edition in Richmond that have, have done that. Yeah, so I really appreciated the recommendation of maximizing the, the W N O D trail. I feel like that's critical. If that public services building is created, built and placed in that area, I hope that it would be sort of an attractive building that the public could access and use. So let's see. And then, yeah, the street realignment, I think, makes a lot of sense. I guess, I guess my main, my main question is like, there's a lot that the city wants to do in its five acres and sort of seems like a problem of geometry. How are we going to fit everything that we want in there, especially when some of these uses are like some large horizontal storage facilities that, you know, take up a lot of space? So like, that's just a bigger picture question that I have. I think that's it for me to start. Do you want to go, Mr.?
Should I add just a couple of things? Yeah, I see it as a challenging site, and so trying to kind of blend these light industrial uses with new residential uses, I think will be, will be a challenge. I think the ULI tap report does the best it can to, to try to kind of give a good optimistic look at how that could be done. But I think personally, I think that's going to be a lot of challenges. A lot of very good public design elements that are in the plan, a lot of things in there such as realigning the streets, coordinating with the county, you know, for the buyer property, that seems like, you know, a pretty near-term requirement. Affordable housing, and I would think in this area, workforce housing kind of makes a lot of sense to me. More attractive street scape. I would think there's a, there's a need for flexible zoning. I think we've learned recently that, you know, kind of the older way of zoning where we try to forecast with a lot of precision as to which uses are going to occur in a building, that's, you know, we learn pretty quickly that things change very rapidly, and we're not all necessarily the greatest when it comes to forecasting future uses. So I think as we consider the rezoning of this area, that keeping flexibility in mind, you know, makes a lot of sense to me. One thing I'll just add in the area of financing, in addition to the list that you, that you described earlier, and that is the possibility of commercial property assessed clean energy as a, as a way of financing. One thing I noticed the tap report was, I'm going to say relatively light on, is the whole area of sustainability, especially when you compare it to the Small Area Plan. There's a lot of very good ideas in the city's Small Area Plan on sustainability. So it'd be good to, to kind of pull over some of those elements into the, to the framework on that. But the, the financing piece, the commercial property assessed clean energy, that's one thing that we could, the city would have to pass an ordinance, but it would be a form of financing available to any of the private developers that are considering renovation, and it would give them an opportunity to get cheaper financing and for the city to get more sustainable buildings. So I'll, I'll offer that, and that's all, all I have.
Thank you, just a couple of things. Hopefully I can remember two, at least remember one. The discussion about the tree canopy being partly addressed by planting of trees along the bike trail makes me remember that Dominion needs to be on board for whatever great things we think we're going to do with trees in the vicinity of the high-power lines. So just make sure they're one of the stakeholders. And this is a very exciting opportunity, and hopefully it'll, you know, we'll attach some deadlines and timelines, and it'll get done, you know, while some of us are still here to enjoy it. But I would be mindful not to, not to overpromise, as others have said. You know, basically every dream and hope that we all have here in Falls Church is going to fit in this five acres of land. The things that are, I think, going to be the most challenging would be, one of the questions identified in the report was no more big national businesses, we want small retailers as our commercial. That's a great goal to have, but it's a very challenging one to have, at least. Most of the new buildings that we've done end up being regional chains or national credit tenants sometimes. A mom and pop kind of store has a hard time locating on the ground floor of these new buildings just because of the expense that, you know, it takes to build them. So just be mindful of what we promise at the outset, so that folks don't get their hopes up way too high. I still, I still think we can make some great strides and do some good things, and, and I hope the thing moves forward with the cooperation of the county. That's the final point that we learned at West Falls, that the folks who more, most immediately lived next door to the project, we weren't happy, and we had a good relationship with the supervisor and were able to deal with, overcome, mollify some of those concerns. But that's especially going to be the case, I think, with the development of this area. Most of the residents existing that are affected are going to be outside the city limits. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm, I'm also especially excited about the challenges, but also the tremendous opportunities that are present in something that is this challenging to kind of attack. And the, the ULI tap did a really good job at identifying a lot of those great opportunities, especially for the apprenticeship programs, knowing that our crafts and our trades are suffering with that demographic, to establish some kind of program, maybe a partnership with some private entities as well in that development, that would be a great use of that light industry as well. Affordable housing, of course, green space, the permeability of the W N O D trail, I think it's definitely a bonus of that to bring more modes of transportation into that area as well and connect down the Gordon Road realignment into that other Virgin Broad area and then into the West Falls larger area. Yeah, and sustainability as well. I think there's a lot of positivity, and I'm looking forward to it.
Good, yes. First of all, great presentation, very informative. I agree with what my other commissioners have mostly said here. I do think in terms of the affordable housing, there's the affordable housing programs that we know about, but I also think we need to think through the affordability of housing, so thinking about as much diversity in the housing structures as possible, so that we can bring down the market rate housing below a million dollars. I don't know if that's feasible, but that's, that should be a goal. And the only other thing that I want to bring up, something that I've seen, I haven't heard mentioned in this discussion, but I've seen, and is very exciting in other cities, is food truck parks. Something just to consider, I don't know if that can, if there's a zoning that's required, zoning changes that's required, but, you know, you could put a food truck park on the edge of the bike trail, and you only need a quarter acre or half an acre at most, and it's just kind of adds a certain excitement to the area. And other cities are doing it about the size of a Falls Church, and they seem to be incredibly successful. So I'll just throw that out.
Any final planning commission? Okay, how about the EDA?
I attended the work sessions back in January, and, and I think it was a good opportunity for many people in the city to have a discussion and some understanding of, of what our thoughts either are or might be for the Gordon Road Triangle. The one thing that I would pick up on, or I would hope we would pick up on, and it was just mentioned as well by, that the relationship with Fairfax County is important, but even more important than that, I think, is the relationship with the buyer family with respect to their property. I would argue that we should be looking at including the acreage that's outside of our holdings right now as part of this project. And the reason I would say that is because what has been submitted to Fairfax County basically splits the line, and there's actually development that they're proposing to do on the city side as part of their overall development. So we've got to have discussions with them about how we can bring all of this together as, as hopefully one project. The other thing is, for the first time today, I looked at the, at least the feasibility study that was done for our property and our property yard in the future. I would argue that we're not thinking big enough. I think there's the opportunity to do public-private partnership there, to come up with a developer who would come in and build above whatever it is we need to have built on the lower levels of that. But I think if we just do something that fits our needs, then we're going to be missing a huge opportunity to really maximize the five or so acres that we've got there. So I think we've got to pay attention to that as well. Because as we know, for years and years and years, we look for other places for that stuff to go to. Fairfax County doesn't want it, Arlington doesn't want it, went as far as Loudoun County, and they don't want it. So we're going to have to figure out how to make it work within our jurisdictional boundaries. And again, if we can maximize what goes above, think of a layer cake. We get the lower levels, they get wherever comes above. And as far as zoning is concerned there, as we know from West Falls, there's really no restriction as to how high, how high we need to go, so density is something that works in our favor. So I think we need to make sure that we're thinking about that, and I think we need to make sure we're having lots of discussion about the landowners as well. That's going to be important. So I'll leave it at that.
You want to go first? Looking at this, I think it is very exciting.
Looking at this, I think it is very exciting. I think we have to be real creative with density. I'm going to second what Alan said there is how do we, how do we look at maybe even ultra-dense places to try to figure out, not necessarily from a height perspective, but how do we get all these things we want into this crazy space? There's a lot of dead space in the middle of this. There's a lot of subtrain possibilities. We've got to look at all of those things to try to do that. And then, of course, we have the fact that we have no industrial space hardly left. And we keep beating it away. Where are we going to go with it? What are we going to do with it? The diversity of businesses is critically important to our success. So that's where I think you have to look at the density, how high you go, what you put on top of whatever. We have to get our needs and we have to get the needs of the community built into it. And I think that's going to be key to the success. I think it's a great opportunity, but it's one of our last. So good luck.
Couple of points.
I'm here for you, too.
Yeah. This is a quintuplet opportunity.
Thank you.
Someone mentioned force fitting multiple uses. That's one of my concerns and you're alluding to it also. It just seems like there's so much we're trying to put into this one site that I really think the alternative is we should find another site for Public Works. Now, I know, Alan, you said that's all been looked at, but just from my going around town, there's a county site down at Lincoln and West Mortland, underutilized county site right on that corner. Two sites. Maybe we could work out some kind of a swap or some kind of a deal with the county and move all Public Works to a new site. And then we could use this site for as creative a development as we could possibly come up with, including workforce housing and so forth. So I know that's an alternative point of view, but it just seems to me we're trying to force everything into this. And I would make every effort possible to move Public Works somewhere else and then do everything else we want with this property.
Mark, thanks again. ULI continues to deliver. We appreciate that. A couple of things, so let me, a couple of comments and then some questions. But let me start with big picture. As with a lot of the contemplation around land use and some of these bigger projects, we have to remember that Falls Church has to remain unique. And we are tucked in the shadow of some fairly dense commercial districts in Tysons and Arlington County. And when we have an opportunity like this, we have to think about doing something that is distinctly creative from the rest of the development that we've seen in the city. And so this may be a bit of a hot take coming from me, but I don't like the idea of traditional mixed use here. I think that there may be a component for residential. And we've talked about the various uses of affordable in addition to the homeless shelter, which has a place. But I do think that when we think about remaining unique and carrying through on the opportunity that this site presents, that we should look at preserving as much of the industrial and flex space as we possibly can. Matt's absolutely correct. Industrial and flex space, which is industrial with kind of an office component, is an endangered species inside of the Beltway. Folks are really craving that type of maker space that we've talked about, something that is not dirty industrial, but it allows people to assemble, allows people to create. And we've talked about it in terms of, you know, internships and apprenticeships and things like that. And so I would ask that we lean heavily into that component. The other thing that we have to be careful about is that we've delivered quite a bit of dense mixed use at certain nodes in the city. And if we create too dense, meaning in terms of height, at Gordon Road Triangle, that western gateway almost becomes walled off. And we run the risk of preventing folks from carrying themselves into the city for some of the experiential retail and restaurants that we have. So you could effectively cannibalize what we've created inside. And you create that walled effect where they stop, right, at West Falls, they stop at Gordon Road, and then they never actually make it into downtown. And so we, to some extent, if it's too dense, too tall, we will orphan what we've created here. And that's going to work counter to what we want. The other thing that needs to be considered, and I'm not sure if this was covered in the TAP studies, forgive me if it was. One of the concerns that we have over there in terms of the way that that property has been used or that 20 acres has been used over decades and decades is contamination. I think that there are going to be substantial environmental concerns over there that are going to require a significant amount of cleanup depending on what is approved and zoned. And from a market standpoint, unless things change dramatically over the next 10 to 20 years, the cost of remediation at a site like that is really going to strain the financial feasibility of what a private developer can bring because they've just got to move a massive amount of dirt and clean it. And most of the projects that I've worked on personally, I know Alan can attest to this because they've dealt with it as well, is that it typically requires, you know, some type of brownfield tax credit or voluntary cleanup program. And I'm not sure that that's something that the city really wants to embrace, which again leads us back to how can we retain some of the industrial components. Andrea mentioned Scott's Edition, which was like the first thing that came to mind. I love Scott's Edition, what they did with that. There was a small amount of residential down there, but it is a distinctly different part of Richmond, which is done quite well. And so it's a long way of saying if we keep it unique, if we embrace the industrial aspect of it and think about creating something that is welcoming for a different reason. Because again, we will risk, I think, cannibalizing what we've worked very carefully to try to curate in, inside the city. And then two other things. It seems to me, and I haven't really thought through the real estate economics of this, I don't love the idea of a parking garage sitting in the middle of that site. It's not that it's not necessary because if there are commercial uses that require that are depending on what happens with the property yard, which I will differ from Jim, I think that the property yard and public services needs to stay there for a host of reasons. But I appreciate Jim trying to think creatively there. I don't like the idea of that parking garage there simply because it leads us down the path of being a very car-forward and car-centric area of town, which I do not think is what we should be embracing. We have the benefit of creating a separate gateway, which is actually done very well. There was a lot of conversation about that green space and some of the experiential retail off of the trail. I think it would be a huge mess for us to try to move this or envision it as something that is car-forward. I think it needs to be lower density. I think we really need to try to embrace the traffic that's coming down W and O D. And if there is some retail or some experience in there that we're bringing people in from that gateway as opposed to creating just kind of a separate mixed-use node that people come to, they park and then they leave. And I think that that's the danger that you run into when you build a parking garage there. And then the last thing that I'll say, when we talk about zoning challenges and we talk about, you know, delivering some of the more traditional mixed use. I mean, we have over a million square feet up at West Falls across the street where Virgin Broad is. That type of retail may invite some residential development at some point in the future. And then, of course, you have what the buyers are doing on their site. Again, we run the risk of planning something that could result in this kind of fortress effect on that west side of the city, which almost in my opinion, when you look at it, almost creates two separate Falls Churches, right? It's what's on this side of the W and O D and what's on this side. And so I would just ask, we think very, very carefully about that. But again, you guys, as usual, knocked it out of the park and were very, very creative. And you guys, you know, you brought receipts, man. So very well done, Mark. Thank you. And thanks to everybody that participated. And thank you guys for including us in this conversation.
Thank you for all those comments. Council, I'm sure someone's, we'll start this way. Laura?
Should I go through the whole list or should we?
Go. Go. I think everyone's kind of going through their whole list, so.
The more you go through it, the more drop off of, et cetera.
Well, thank you all for the, thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the work on this. And thank you all to our guests for your feedback. It's given me a lot to think about. Couple of questions, some are also for Mr. Shields. The appointing sort of a champion, would that be sort of like an owner's rep? Like when we built Meridian, we'd had Daisy Brangman from Brailsford and Dunleavy like that? Or would that be a staff member within the city?
I think it would be, we, I personally think it would be a staff member within the city.
Okay. Do you think that person would have enough, because it seemed like, as we've all said, it's a very complex process. And I think one of the things I've talked to with my, the school board chair, some, we had some hiccups with the baseball field that went in. And one of the things we talked about was reason that Meridian went so smoothly is we had an owner's rep that helped us through that process, made sure we stayed on time and on budget. So that might just be something we'd want to think about because it is a very complex project.
And so in answering your question, I was talking about in terms of the kind of the governance structure that the ULI TAP suggested, which is really to have a regular cadence of coordinating amongst the various different property owners in Fairfax County. So it's more of a planner's function.
Okay.
Now ultimately, where we want to get to, which is to make improvements at the property yard, that's a whole different situation. When you're getting into construction management, that would be a different.
Okay. But you feel like that initial sort of, we can do that with our, our planning team can do that in-house.
That's my vision for it. We will talk a little bit more about that, sort of lay out what the scope of work for that would be, which we've not done yet.
Right.
But that's my initial thinking on it.
Okay. And then I liked, I liked the whole idea of, you know, really attacking the city services first and letting us sort of take the lead and then, you know, having, approaching the other phases of it. You know, I've said with the unhoused population, the homeless shelter, one of the things that we talked about this summer is that we also saw some of the unhoused population also, you know, our homeless shelters only open during the winter. And as our summers get hotter, we see more unhoused people trying to, you know, go into the Whole Foods and seek relief. So that's something that I've always been really interested in is not only expanding the size, making it ADA compliant, but also enabling them to be open, you know, a little bit more throughout the year, if not the whole year. The apprenticeship program, I love that. And I was thinking even, you could even take it a step further and work with the high school. Because, you know, one of the things I think we see in the news more and more is the questioning of, is a four-year college degree worth the debt you take on and people can't get jobs and that sort of thing? And there's more of a push for the trades now. And there are, you know, there are students at Meridian that are not on the college track. And so is this a good way really to expose them to the trades? And like even within, you know, recruiting them even into our own city staff. As I've said before, that's also, I think we need to do that with our police department is really exposing our Meridian students to what's possible within their own city. I agree with Mr. Lichtenhouse about the parking garage. I think having sort of a, as you're coming in from Tysons into the city and then there's, that's the first thing you see is a garage. I don't love that idea. So I would say that it's, that would be something that I would want to rethink if that was what we were looking at, was actually a taller profile garage. And then the affordable housing, one of the things, so I've been campaigning for this election. And it's been interesting, I've heard people, you know, when they talk about affordable housing, they specifically talk about how they want to see it for our teachers and our city staff, like the people that work within our city. And I don't know all the ins and outs of housing policy and laws and all that. But that is something I think that would be really interesting is, you know, looking at that too is, could we, you know, is it mixed income? Is it affordable, but also, you know, really, as I think some, one of you said, the workforce housing would be great. One question I have for Mr. Stevens, I really like the idea of the food trucks, but environmentally is that, no, I know, I know, no, I know, I know it was your idea, but you're, you're my environmental go-to guy. So is it, is, I love the idea of food trucks. That's really creative. But I just answered the Falls Church Climate Action Network survey today. And one of the things we talked about was greenhouse gas emissions. How does that, is that something that's not great to have food trucks there with?
I've seen a lot of studies, but I haven't seen a study on that.
Okay, I was just curious. Okay, okay.
Just how food and solar panels.
Okay. Just, okay, I'm almost done with my comments. And then I liked Mr. Quill's idea of moving Public Works. I don't know if that would be possible. But again, I guess my biggest takeaway with this is with the density is that is the worst intersection. I hate that intersection, whether you're going from Tysons, whether you're going into Tysons, whether you're on Haycock, it is bad in the morning as people are trying to get to Tysons to work, trying to drop their kids off at Meridian. It's bad in the evening where it's the same thing. So, you know, I just, I, the whole density piece, I think we just really have to work in tandem, whether it's with VDOT or what have you, but just to figure out the traffic flow of that whole intersection because it's already rather bad. And that's before we've really developed that area. So, but again, I think this is a great conversation. Thank you all for joining us. You've given me a lot to think about. And thank you for the presentation.
Aaron?
Okay. I might be a little scattered in my comments here because I had some questions. I can sort of flip them into comments. I think like Ms. Downs, I'm excited for this. I had questions about sort of the scale across the parcels, right? Because we talk about the different land use in the report, but we don't get into sort of height, density, scale. And for me, I think when I gave comments on this, I think, you know, about coming over the crest of the hill, right? And you have the West Falls development there and what is the signal? Or what is the marker of entering Falls Church? And don't think that we need, right, high density, super high, you know, maximum floor area ratios or whatever else. But would like to see this as sort of, right, light, industrial, amenity-rich, not in terms of like swimming pools, but green space and, you know, figuring out how we use the city property and get the public services center in there and keep the supportive and unhoused, like, population and places, but do so in a way that even where there's a slide in the TAP report somewhere that has the like bike path that comes off the W and O D trail and goes into the, let's call it the like district, right? We'll call it the metal district in my mind. But you'll go in there and the bike path is going through like what's the public services center and like the recycling center. So how are we going to do something that interests people that like, yes, you need the city services, but you also want something that is, you know, inviting and attractive and a place that people want to spend their time? And so figuring out how you're going to use like the tree canopy, open space, RPA area, while also signaling that there's like something there and some reason for people to kind of come off the bike trail and into this like little district that we've created. Similarly to Laura on the affordable housing piece, I agree that I would like to see dedicated city workforce housing and not just talking about sort of, you know, general, oh, we're going to achieve mixed income or we're going to achieve certain like percentages. You know, you can run into fair housing issues kind of with dedicated workforce housing. But I think we've reached a point and we're continually seeing that we're having enough issues trying to fill city vacancies and that, you know, we sometimes lose employees because of distances or, you know, commutes that they're going to have versus the wages that they're making, that it makes sense to actually strongly consider like dedicated workforce housing or when we're thinking about the public-private partnerships, like what percentages we may want in other aspects of like those properties in addition to like what it is that we're able to bring to this being, you know, the property owner with a quarter of the acreage in the site. I agree on the trades sort of programs and apprenticeship programs. I think just last week, the schools were talking about kind of dual enrollment issues and have heard similarly to Laura, like people are interested in trade programs and to the extent that it can be a mentorship sort of or a feeder system for people who are interested into city programs, that would be, you know, great for us. On the, and I'll be interested in hearing more from Mr. Shields, I guess, in the upcoming budget cycle about sort of what you think we need to do to properly resource this for both kind of the community conversations and input as well as sort of the sewer and stormwater pieces of this. Like the ULI talks about the stormwater piece, but, you know, we just went through sewer and this is going to be another district where we need to determine like what are flows and what are, right, like capacities and how much of that is taken into consideration and what we're doing right now? And is it properly captured in like the ongoing conversations we're having with Fairfax Water and the amount, you know, that we need to think about in the CIP for years out to continue to maintain sort of service levels at, you know, the capacities that we need? And then I guess a question I have, the report at various places talks about scrapping the $30 million plan for the property yard. And I was just wondering if you could provide a little bit more insight into, you know, what that means? And so there are different points where it was like, you know, the city should almost start from scratch and thinking about setting aside that Fox whatever architect study or whatever it was that we saw a few months ago pre-budget cycle. And so is that from the perspective of like just the partnerships? It said something like the city needs to be realistic about the financial projection. be realistic about the financial projections. And I don't know if that's just like, we were talking about 30 million and that sort of being what we could do for a debt like ceiling. But do you have more insight into like what, what, what that means or where the panel was in thinking about that issue in particular?
Sure, I'm happy to offer some additional insight. Anecdotally, deliberations from the panel saw that number as being much too high for what the city should reasonably expect to, to, to set as their debt ceiling, especially if specific elements of low-cost capital to fund the infrastructure and municipal redevelopment parts of what you own are undertaken. So both in, in terms of reassessing the architectural concerns of what, what can be built and the, the cost of labor and materials, but also with the addition, the introduction of creative financing sources, they, they were confident that that number should be lowered.
Okay, great. And then one other question I had. The, the, we've been talking about the parking garage, but some of the panel's recommendation basically moves the impound lot and the bus parking onto private property. So it's no longer on the city property. And so can you also like speak to the, I understand like the desirability of doing that so that we maximize space that we have, but like what, how realistic is that both from a phasing standpoint, but then also from just like partners who are going to be willing to have school buses on their ground floor?
It's a great question. The thing that I would say is by the city demonstrating initiative through investing in the operations yard and the property yard in phase one, it will, and, and presenting a vision that for the Gordon Road Triangle is this reimagined place for, for people and a wide array of activities that puts people first, that there will be an opportunity to bring those landowners to the table for some sort of exchange to, to build that shared parking on that parcel that is currently private-owned land.
Can I add something, please?
I remember this coming up in, in conversation at our roundtable. There was discussion over land swap. So the city's got this land, but we think that a public use would be better over here where a private developer has that land. And there was a discussion about a land swap and, you know, the financial mechanism of how that happens is a little more complicated. But that was originally the thought, if that helps.
Thank you.
So if the garage, if we like the garage doesn't get built until phase three, where does everything get parked in phase one and two?
Yeah.
I guess that's a more simple question. Okay, Erin, do you have more?
No, I'm good for now. Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Justine, you have your hand up?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. So just a few quick notes on things that I just wanted to second or that hadn't been covered. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the, the food truck idea. I, I do like the idea of this being unique space. And so it doesn't, you know, if we're concerned about environmentalism and whatever emissions that food trucks might bring, small stalls or other things like that, there's other ways to support small businesses or rotating businesses even, especially along the W N O D trail. And that could really create an attractive sense of place or even a destination for people to come on the W N O D trail. I, I think about Solas Salons in Arlington where they have small stalls or what is it? Even, you know, Bork, Bork G's started at the, the farmer's market and then was able to graduate into other space in Falls Church. So I do like the idea of, of unique and cultivating, using some of the space to cultivate small businesses best we can. I'm also not crazy about the parking garage. But yeah, that's, that's just going to be a, something that we'd, we'd have to figure out how else we can park this and how to utilize the space as, as everything comes together. Other things, I, I also wanted to second workforce housing. I would be in favor of, of, you know, there's a lot that we want to use the space for. And I also agree with maker spaces and other things to, to keep it unique. But given the limited amount of space in Falls Church and how many things we want on the site, I, I do think that density would be a rather good option here. And density can also then help support the businesses and other things. I, I don't see, I could understand how having similar businesses would maybe wall off people from entering the rest of the city. But I don't think having additional housing here would wall people off from, from entering the rest of the city. In fact, I would think it would add to more businesses, getting more revenue and other things like that. So I, I would support additional density here. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Debbie.
The great news about going later is that a lot of the questions have been asked and a lot of comments have been made, but then you have to kind of scramble to figure out which ones haven't. I just wanted to, and thinking about this evening and talking about and hearing this report, I was thinking back to participating. I know many of you also did participating in the West Falls, the high school TAP and sitting through that and having spent 20-plus years thinking about the high school re-imagination. It seemed so impossible at the time, right? Like it just seemed like, oh, there's so many ideas. It's such a small space. How are we going to fit 10 acres of development on a place that was just a high school before? You know, it's hard to envision that. You look at renderings and, you know, that's great. But I think it's pretty exciting that we've seen that come to fruition, although it's taken time and a considerable amount of effort and different types of financing and different types of companies who've come in and been developers and their partnerships have changed over time. And I think those are a lot of the lessons that we've learned from that apply here. And when you first read this and think about how much we're trying to fit into this site, it, I think it does feel overwhelming. Like, wait, we want to do housing. We want to do, you know, environmental, we're going to add new businesses. We're going to add, you know, apprentice program. We're going to do all this. And by the way, it's five acres. And we're going to get all the, you know, other owners of businesses to work with us to get that land. And while it might seem overwhelming, I felt overwhelmed by that when we went through the process before. And I think it's pretty impressive where we've landed. So I just kind of wanted to preface that, this conversation with that idea. And for anyone who wasn't a participant in that, to give you kind of hope that these things do end up oftentimes working out really, really well. I wanted to also second, third, fourth, workforce housing and including people who live in the city. I know we've done teachers and city employees as like the top ranks, like in the re-building and other places. So we know there's a mechanism to do that. I love having all the connections, a connection to Fairfax County, the connection to the trail at multiple places. And then, you know, we haven't really talked about it, but the connection across to West Falls and to West Falls Metro too, like bringing the biking, bringing the people who are walking, you know, all modes from that side of the street as well. When we look at the improvements that are suggested on pedestrian crosswalks and lighting, I think that's going to bring, kind of, you know, knit those two together better than they have been for quite some time. And I definitely agree on that, you know, the comments on working with Fairfax County. I'm not as familiar with what they've proposed. And it's obviously going to be pretty important to understand what they're proposing and how we can blend those together. We've also demonstrated that we can work well Fairfax County on developments that are kind of cross-border as we see right at West Falls and with the Virginia Tech property and the development behind there as well. I also, thinking about Virginia Tech and thinking about the apprentice programs and tying it in not only to the high school, but into Virginia Tech and its innovate, construction innovation center that's going up. They clearly are invested in the trades as well. They're building everything. I mean, I think there are a lot of different ways we can tie that together. That's a pretty unique situation to have, you know, such a high-level high school right next to Virginia Tech, right next to whatever we're building at Gordon Road. So I think, you know, and I think of triangle and moving it away from Gordon Road and moving that triangle into Virginia Tech High School and Gordon Road. In addition to the apprentice programs, I know Ross, the EDA, we've also talked about having innovation hubs. They don't take a ton of space, but they also are rotating and encouraging entrepreneurs to come into a designated space where they, you know, work with one another. Maybe there's some tech there that they wouldn't have otherwise. Maybe it's programming. It's been very successful in Arlington, Alexandria's Innovation Hub. Tysons has a smaller one. Fairfax City has a smaller one that's tied into George Mason University. Why can't we tie that into Virginia Tech and to our high school and to what's happening in the city of Falls Church? So not just apprentice programs for the trades, but encouraging entrepreneurship. And that could all go in the same space. It doesn't take a lot of physical plant space. But I think that's important to think of too. And, you know, our next ideas, our next businesses, our next creations all come from entrepreneurs and innovators. And why don't we encourage them to be in Falls Church and to bring those businesses here? And a lot of the other questions are on the timeline for creating the scope of work. Because I think the scope of work and how we create that is going to define who responds and how they respond, which then defines how expensive it is, which then defines how we go and look at our different financing mechanisms. Because, you know, it's great to dream it all up, but if we can't finance it at the end of the day, this is a lot of, you know, effort that's going underutilized. So, you know what, can you talk just a little bit about the timeline? I know you said you haven't started the scope of work, but what is the envisioned timeline of starting the scope of work and putting it out to RFP?
Well, it's not, depends on what we're talking about the RFP for. So in terms of the work of the champion, if, if you sort of go back in history, kind of the prior project that you were talking about, it started off as a Lauren Bruce is sort of was the convener to have the school board, working with the city council. That evolved into Carly Aubrey being the, the champion, bringing in Womato, bringing, bringing in Virginia Tech, making sure that all the conversations were happening so that as the schools were doing their planning, the city was doing its planning, our neighbors were doing their planning. That's really the role of the champion is to make sure everybody's talking with each other. And also signaling seriousness of intent. That was so important for us up at the high school that got all the other partners actually starting to think strategically about what they were going to do and how they were going to participate. And so we think that type of alchemy or that chemistry can start in the Gordon Road Triangle as well. So that's the initial part. The city, you know, from a building perspective, what's in the CIP is for design and engineering for the property yard in FY27 and construction in FY28. And we'll be talking about that in the CIP next year. We are, you know, we're in that mode right now of considering all options. We do have the Fox study. What is very helpful about it is it puts kind of all the data in one place. It has a space needs analysis. It infines all of the land that we have currently under control and gives some conceptual ideas on, on how our needs could be met on the site. That's going to evolve. We, we knew as that was being presented that that plan was going to evolve. But the role of a process like this is then to, in synergy with other partners, think about how can our plans be mixed well with other people's plans and have ultimately traction in moving forward so that we can meet what we believe are pressing needs at, at the property yard. Those facilities are really, you know, we're, we've got a great staff to do a wonderful job of making it work. And I think we can work with staff to have a better outcome and a better workplace that also might meet some additional public safety needs, which has been part of our scope of work and study and other city needs on that site as well. I'm giving a long-winded answer. I'm not giving you dates. The only dates are those that are in the CIP at this point.
So the design and engineering, which is funded in FY27, and that design, I mean, is that design going to be, remain solely on public works building or is it going to be expanded to say, public works is phase one, tell us how you could do phase two and phase three? Or, you know, are we going to open it up at that point in time? Or are we saying we're going to, I guess when I, I mean, I want to lead to that being a yes because if we build and engineer just that public services, will we ever come back and have an opportunity to build the other things we're discussing? Does that question make sense?
So I think that's the work to do between now and, and FY27 is to consider kind of sort of the big picture. And then you do narrow down into what we're actually going to do. But it's good to be open-minded as you go into a planning process to make sure you're not leaving anybody behind or leaving any good ideas behind. So that's what I think the work of the champion would be is to make sure that all those conversations are happening and all that thinking is happening. In terms of being open-minded, I will make a comment about moving the property yard to another location. I think that's probably being too open-minded. It's important to have certain anchors to your, to our thinking. And we have studied moving the property yard to a different location. We spent a decent amount of money, now granted it was 20 years ago, of evaluating every potential parcel within a reasonable radius of the city, including the parcel that was mentioned down on Lincoln and West Westmoreland. It's, we believe, 99.9999% not possible. And so I, I think as a planning principle, it's good to say, let's embrace what we need to get done on the site. And one of them is to have a good and effective workspace for our operations staff. And then build off of that and, and some good constructive directions.
But not 100%.
Debbie, do you have more?
So one real quick, I'm squeezing in here. So one, one point of clarification. I think the, the design money for the property yard is in FY28. So we have a little more time with what's in the CIP right now. So.
Design 28, construction 29.
That's what's currently in the CIP.
And when we looked at the $30 million price tag for the last, you know, design phase, we didn't discuss these other types of creative financing. So I guess that also in my mind is part of the design and engineering is bringing in whether it's presumably a third party to come in and give us ideas on that creative financing as well versus going to, you know, bond referendum or something else like that. Because if it's a bond referendum, then it's also timing of when that happens, how it's discussed, how it's laid out and how that fits into construction in FY29. So I guess my request is that in that, in design and engineering, we're also including a third-party financing expert.
Just a point of clarification. You guys keep working on $30 million. Is that what you're looking?
Excuse me, is, is that the number that's tied to that feasibility study?
Yes.
Yes.
That's a construction number. That is not a total project cost number. Add 30 to 40% to that number in order to get what it's really going to cost you to build a facility if it was one of those three options that you've got. I think it was 31 and 37 were the numbers. That's just hard cost construction, does not include soft cost. Okay? So that's a much bigger number that you're going to be looking at in terms of doing a full building. And again, I think I, I would support what, what, excuse me, the city manager's saying. Having that champion to have all discussions, those discussions is really what's going to drive what you're going to do with your site, which is why I said earlier, I think you're not thinking big enough if you're looking at that feasibility study as to what you want to put on that site. I think you could leverage that into much more than that. And you could do what you're doing, Deb, which is to say, the financing is going to be a P3. That's what you're going to put out there. That's what developers will come in and build. They'll get, you did it already. You did it with the high school. You did it with the middle school. You know how to do it. That's what's going to get you what you want. But not thinking small. Not for that site. The rest of it, maybe there's, you know, some modulated discussion that happens on the rest of the site. But I think you've got to take every advantage you can, put as much as you can on what you hold and leverage that to its maximum ability.
Agreed. Thank you. That's it for me for now.
Mary Beth?
Thank you. Thanks for all that information. As Debbie said, my questions are shrinking down. But two, well, several things were on my mind and then we touched on them a little bit. I'm going to start with what Mr. Lichtenhouse said about contamination and also the concrete plant. Because that's mentioned in here. Like, that's not going anywhere, right? That's staying right there.
We have no information that it's moving.
Right. So that's a, that's, you know, and it mentions in the report, the particulate matter, the, the other, the trucks and everything going through there. So I feel like that's, that's another one of those anchors that we have to be aware that that's going to stay there no matter what else we put on the Route 7 side of the project. Another thought I have is just the, the primary reason that we started to talk about this was because of the property yard. And that is the most important thing as we look ahead to the, what needs to get fixed as a workplace, right? Because as a workplace, it's are, who are working there are safe, that all the things that need to be there, whether it's in a parking garage or elsewhere, are housed properly. And that brings me to the buses. Because the bus parking, those of us that worked on the high school remember that every time we talk about buses, yeah, we'll figure that out eventually, we'll figure that, yeah, yeah, the bus, we had to figure out somewhere for the buses. And so, they ended up on that site. But there was not really an intentional plan. And because of that, currently, the bus driving staff and the staff who are using the property yard are really working hard to share that space. And it's not ideal, and any of them would tell you that. So, I want to make sure that as we think about where the buses are going, that we're really thinking about the people that are driving the buses, the people that are working in the property yard, and think about it as a workspace. As we think about moving things, if we can't move the property yard, is there a reason why we are insisting that the homeless shelter has to stay there? That, I mean, we can move people much more easily than we can move the property yard. And the homeless shelter ended up there because it had been housed in a church and then we moved it there, but it doesn't, that of all the things that could be moved, seems like something that could be moved. That there could be another place, and we've asserted, you know, several weeks ago, we approved the Affordable Living Plan, that it's really important to us that there is a place for unhoused people in emergency situations. But does it have to be there? And could we take that out of this equation? We keep talking about it as if it's one of those things that isn't going to move, but it's not like a concrete plant. It could be moved. As long as we're not saying, okay, we're going to move it, we're going to get rid of it. We want to really find a place where people would be safe. And then the financial, the chart of financial options, and I like what Mr. Brengman just said about the PPP, because yeah, it has worked for us several times, and it works well. But it was really nice to see those three different financial options in the chart, just to think about as ways to pay for things like this, because that is definitely beyond my area of expertise. So, it was nice to hear from others who have that area of expertise that could envision a way to make this happen. That's all I have, thanks.
Justine, you have your hand up again, do you have more? Or was that from earlier?
No, sorry, I forgot to take it down earlier.
Great, thank you. I like it. I think everyone's gone, so I guess I get to wrap up. So, no promises that my questions or comments are any shorter, even though I get to go last. But so, thank you to ULI and everyone for joining us. I think overall, there is so much potential and so many policy objectives I think we want to accomplish here. I think the tension I see is, can we be everything to everyone, paired with, how are we going to pay for it? And that, I think, answers the, like, how much density would we allow? Because ultimately, I think that's what we struggled with the high school. In order for 120 million, we had to put a lot of uses there and extract a lot of money out of it. I think, I felt a bit of deja vu as we were going through this, it's like, oh, we have a similar problem except we're dealing with half the acreage. And we, you know, we only control five acres of it. So, I think that's the challenge. I'll start with things that I liked. I think as Mary Beth said, the property yard is the last big public facility we have not invested in, and so I think it is time, it is something that we want to prioritize doing. So, I'm glad to see that, obviously, that's still a big use here. Plus one also for the shelter, although I guess I'm agnostic whether we solve for it here elsewhere. I think Housing Commission and staff actually kicked off a needs assessment with Fairfax County, determine what our unhoused population needs are. So, I would put a pin in that one because I think we're supposed to get back that report sometime in 2026. So, depending on what the long-term needs are across the region, we just need to find a place to meet those needs. So, that was one thing. I really love how we're activating the WNOD, we're thinking about that as a big asset. So, the Atlanta electeds actually came into Northern Virginia a couple of weeks ago, and so I met with them, and they talked about their Belt Line project. And so, if you're not familiar with it, it's 22 miles of converted old rail that turned into a bike path. Two and a half miles of it is a giant green esplanade with, you know, green space, restaurants, hotels, really diverse and active. So, that could be inspiration for how we view the back end of this property. And so, I'd encourage you to look up the Atlanta Belt Line as a way of activating the WNOD. Plus one also for the street grid, and I like the thinking about the crossings and being really deliberate about how to cross West Broad Street. That temporary hawk signal that we put in when we were doing the construction, in my opinion, really should be permanent. I think that's the thinking from the tap as well. And also, plus one on the tree canopy. Things that I'm kind of concerned with or need to think more about, and I would love help from this group. We already talked about the parking garage, I don't think anyone loves the idea of using really valuable prime property for a parking garage. That said, I don't know where we would put it. I guess I would challenge us to think not only about what is the cost of putting a parking garage elsewhere, but what's the opportunity cost of what could go there instead? So, the combination of both hard costs as well as opportunity costs. We don't have to move the property yard offsite, but could a parking garage be elsewhere? I don't know. We just don't think it's really great land use for such valuable property. The financing piece, I will have to say I'm a little skeptical of, because I feel like, again, it's deja vu from when we talked about how to finance the $120 million high school, and we had to decouple those decisions. We essentially had to be comfortable taking out $120 million in debt and saying, are we going to have a private deal that will help pay for this? Are we going to be in a similar situation where we're going to decide in FY27, 28 to say, are we taking on 30 to, or if Alan is correct, $50 million in debt to build a new property yard? And are we comfortable with that debt service cost? Or do we think that we need to have the private development quickly follow, and some assurance that will quickly follow to help offset that debt service? I think it feels very similar to that conversation where we need to get cost of how much that public facility is going to cost, and then what the private side might be willing to do. And so, to that end, I want to, plus one, the comment that I think Alan made as well is, I know we can't include Fairfax County in the scope of this, but it also doesn't make sense to not do. So, when you pull up the map, like, there's this giant corner cutoff, and clearly, the densities and uses should be transitioned, right? Like, they have to be compatible. There's no artificial line through there. And so, it seems weird to have a conversation without talking about what they envisioned for that corner and really having a unified triangle. So, that feels like order number one, is to sync up with the Fairfax County, I guess, future land use map discussion, and figure out what are they envisioning, what are their densities and heights, and actually create one unified view. And maybe that's the first order of business when we have that new role, the champion, the new Carly Aubrey essentially for Gordon Road, would be have that conversation, as well as bringing in the private side. Like, what are the, how much density do they imagine, what's their timeline, and have a unified view that's not just a city view. But yeah, I think the financing is the biggest piece for me, is how are we going to pay for our part of it? How does the private stuff enable it or not enable it? Is Phase One really Phase One? For example, the parking garage, like, if we don't build the parking garage till Phase Three, where does everything go in Phase One and Phase Two, right? So, I'm still missing kind of the bigger picture. And then to Ross's question about, like, does density make sense here? I think to answer that for me, I think it's two things. It's one, I think we need to revisit the West End Small Area Plan. So, I think we envisioned primarily the 10-acre site, but now that Burch and Broad has gotten a facelift, I'd like to know what's envisioned across the street. What is this ULI kind of, I guess, how does that factor in so that we can have, I think only three of us probably were around when we did the West End Small Area Plan, probably revisit that and say, like, what does that overall vision look like? And then again, what sort of density do we need to help pay for it if we don't want to take on $60 million in debt? That, to me, would answer how much density we'd want in the site. Because some of it, I think, is just financial necessity, and some of it is what is the broader planning look like for that end of the city? Oh, I missed a comment. I like the trade apprenticeship innovation, that was actually one of the first conversations I had with Dr. Daye. Because I know that Arlington Career Center is the main option for a lot of our students, which isn't a great option for them. And so, if there's an opportunity to keep it in-house, I know that Robert Goff used to have a really great informal pipeline of students from Meridian into the property yard and Public Works Ops. And so, this could be self-serving, but also great for our students as well and not have to go all the way to Arlington. So, I guess overall, what are the next steps? Is it finding the champion? Is it prioritizing it in the council work plan? Is it all of the above?
Could you repeat the?
Yeah, what's our big next step? Is it finding a champion or identifying it, defining kind of scope of work, timeline? Like, what is the big next thing that this group should engage in?
So, what staff is planning to do is to bring to the council, and kind of for the new council, a kind of roadmap for steps to take going forward, including staff assignment and consultants that would likely need to be made, interactions with Fairfax County, kind of at what level, and how, what our cadence on that would be. Standing up a, possibly a quarterly meeting of the various property owners, that type of thing. We want to sort of lay out a structure and a timeline and bring that to the council in the January timeframe.
Yeah. I guess as relates to the facilities utilities chapter conversation we had two weeks ago, last week, whenever that was, and we talked about city hall needing more space, I guess, how could this address some of that too, right?
So, the, in the conceptual plan, there are ideas for adding space at the property yard that could meet some of our space needs here.
Okay. So, that's another reason why, I think some of us had qualms about signing any short-term leases, like, if we think we can solve it on our own property here, if we're going to redevelop, like, I don't know, it's not a short-term, very short-term, but...
Right.
Okay. Any final thoughts from the group or planning? Oh, Justine, your hands back up again.
It is up again, and this is on purpose. I just wanted to follow up on the parking garage. There's probably ways to do a parking garage that are a little bit more palatable, which is having like ground floor some use, and then have, like in Mosaic where they have, they do have ground floor retail, and then they have parking above. And so, I think that there are ways to make it a much more walkable space while still maintaining some parking, or putting parking in some of the other buildings, or obviously underground if that's even a possibility.
Got it. Yeah, I just have a phasing question, like, where does everything go if we don't build the garage till Phase Three? That's all. So, okay? Okay? Great. Well, thank you to the Planning Commission and EDA for joining us. You're welcome to stay, we have more on the agenda. We won't be offended if not, though. Thank you all. Appreciate having all the brains together in this room.
Do you have anything else you wanted to say?
Okay, all right. Well, I guess for the Planning Commission, we are discussing the site plan change, so I don't know if you all want to stay. Okay. You're welcome to stay at the table. Like, you don't have to go in the audience.
Bob? Is Bob here? Are you letting?
I don't think so.
Bob? Did you want to stay, Andrea, did you want to stay for?
We're taking on site plan?
Subdivision site plan. It's colder.
It's colder here? I'm cold.
Have you been so cold?
I'm definitely, well, I'm always cold, yeah. It's rare that we're, I'm not cold in this room.
I don't know, it's cold here.
Shivering.
Sweater or jacket, it's very freezing in here.
What? Okay. Second topic.
So, I'm going to turn it over to Matt Matusik, and we have Jack Traynor and Henry Zhang, who've been working on this. What's before council is a draft ordinance that we're asking be discussed tonight and scheduled for first reading on the 27th. The council's already enacted an initiating resolution for this work back last spring. What we're trying to do is update our city codes to reflect the changes at the state level in last year's General Assembly session. So, Mr. Matusik, let me turn it over to you.
Thank you. Let me just pull this up real quick. There we go. All right. We are actually following up on a number of updates that date back to spring of this year. Staff had several visits to this body and the Planning Commission, really in response to changes coming out of Richmond that dictate some of our site plan subdivision processes and approval authority. What we wanted to do tonight is spend some time revisiting what that means for us, kind of introducing specific adjustments in our approach to handling that change. But really using the opportunity for the broader audience, whoever might be watching this, to kind of peel back the curtain on the review process itself, particularly prior to July of this year. And how do we conduct business with site plan applicants that come in? Because understanding that process puts a lot of this in better perspective, and realizing what the change means and what it doesn't mean. And moving forward, how do we want to address this even in the interim period, knowing that perhaps next summer further changes might be coming out of Richmond? But even if they don't, making sure we stand up a process that can reflect that, provide consistency with the codes, and allow us to work with the development community and various property owners, as they also have to work in those new parameters. So, the presentation tonight, myself, Henry, and Jack are going to cover. And the thinking right now is to really provide that overview of the review process itself, highlight what the state code changes are and how they impact us, and spend a little bit of time speaking to the procedural changes in terms of how we work with the applicant community when they do submit applications, but then also, how do the state code changes impact the code of City of Falls Church specifically? So, we'll get into all those different items. But particularly, we wanted to start with some of the major site plan typologies that staff regularly handles in terms of applications. And these really range from some minor, you know, one to two-story commercial renovations, adaptive reuse applications or expansions, particularly along Broad Street, but also other corridors. We also see particularly more recently, townhome applications, some of which are already under construction. And then site plans also reflect kind of that second phase of special exception applications, now that we had a conceptual approval, more detailed, specific applications come in that allow us to have a better sense of what we actually agreed upon, and allow the applicant to get to that stage where they can start to extract building permits and move forward with construction. And then finally, there's a much broader category of other projects. These might be minor changes to previously approved site plans, or something that doesn't necessarily create a new structure, but perhaps deals with parking, landscaping, and other elements. So, the city code specifically triggers when site plans must be submitted. So, those are kind of the four broad categories of the type of projects that staff usually has to review and that this language will impact. And this is where it gets a little bit fun. So, to do that, whether it's a small application or a more complex one, what doesn't change and will not be impacted by the state code changes is who's involved and what do they have to review? So, this slide is a little bit busy, but what it highlights is, on the left side, the stakeholders from the city that are involved, all the different subject matter experts between various departments and specialties, and they all have a specific perspective that they bring to the review process. On the right side of the screen, you can see the applicant team, usually with a landscape architect, an engineer, an architect, an attorney, sometimes consultants. And we also have, of course, boards and commissions that provide further feedback and perspective. So, all three of those groups with any given site plan application have to go through all the various categories you see here in the middle of the screen. So, whether the state code changes come back and tell us we have to get all this done in 40 days or 10 days, none of that really changes the fact that these folks have to be reviewed, involved, and that those topics have to be covered. So, that's always going to remain the case. And as we do that, case by case, we'll have a better sense of, depending on where the application is located, may trigger additional policies that have to be updated or verified, including comprehensive plan, zoning ordinance, small area plan, and other policies. So, this is kind of the roadmap of what's involved when these applications come in. Now, from start to finish, this is kind of a snapshot of what used to happen prior to July, where an application would initially come in, there would be an assessment of whether or not it was complete, had the right drawings, had the right scale, North Arrow, information from the applicant team, and the fees were paid. Once that intake is complete, we can essentially start the typical three-round reviews, where initially staff works with the applicant to kind of verify all those things we looked at at the previous slide, and then begins to kind of route that, those plans to some of the boards and commissions. Typically, as we kind of have a better sense of what's in front of us and what the comments might be, in round two, but sometimes earlier, is when the Planning Commission receives a work session where we start to get their feedback, and kind of preliminary assessment Typically, as we kind of have a better sense of what's in front of us and what the comments might be, in round two, but sometimes earlier, is when the Planning Commission receives a work session where we start to get their feedback, a kind of preliminary assessment of the proposal. And then usually around three, we get to the point where a lot of the comments have been addressed, maybe there's just a handful of few outstanding issues that we have to work through, but by that point, the application is close enough to being considered for approval, we can start to schedule some of those adjacent property owner notifications, which have to occur 10 days prior to the public meeting. So, this is kind of the flow chart of how things went through the system with everyone involved and all the topics that had to be reviewed. On average, and I have to emphasize that because there's always plenty of exceptions, but on average, we were looking at three rounds, and this process from start to finish generally lasted up to 90 days. And this is not unique to the City of Falls Church, other jurisdictions have the same issue, they have their expertise, they have their policies and standards and their ordinance language, and it usually takes an applicant, however great they might be, up to three rounds, if not more, to respond to all the comments effectively, to the point where we can actually approve it. And this is an important number I want to leave on the screen for a second, because as you'll, as you'll see in our approach to responding to the state code changes, that 90 days becomes very critical. What's important to note is, I think a lot of folks initially did not consider this change as dramatic in that, well, the city already has a 45-day review cycle. If we're just changing it to 40 days, that's not a big change. But in, in practice, the 45 days that we've been using really applies to that third and final round. So, we've spent a lot of time working with the applicant upfront to make sure they've addressed all of our comments, that it's actually an approvable project, and only when we're at the stage of looking at those final few comments, and we feel it's ready for Planning Commission's approval, that's when the clock actually starts. And what you're gonna see with the state code changes is that not only are we reducing it to 40 days instead of 45, the clock starts the minute somebody pays their fees. Okay? So, the two changes that you're gonna see us responding to, first deal with the approval authority, and I know a lot of this has been mentioned in earlier iterations, but this involves shifting the approval authority from the Planning Commission to the designated agent. And in our last action in July, you already identified who that would be, and it's, as another point of clarification, subdivisions, because they live in the charter, are not impacted by that. The other bill which came from the House doesn't involve the approval authority, but rather, again, the shortened review period. We wanted to highlight this table because what it does in that middle column, particularly for single-use applications, so 100% residential, 100% commercial, you can see that with each round, and this is actually logical and I think reasonable, as we start with a comprehensive list of comments, logic would, you know, indicate that with subsequent reviews, less and less comments have to be addressed, if both parties are doing their thing where staff is not introducing brand-new comments and the applicant is working to address the ones they already looked at. So, working from the first submission, where I think they're looking at a 40-day maximum review period, to 30 days with the second, and then 14 days with the third, or any subsequent reviews after that. What's interesting to note, if you just do the math, in that those first three rounds, in the state code language, resemble what we've been doing slightly differently, but getting us back to a three-round or 90-day period to review a lot of these applications. So, in hindsight, if you're an applicant that has no idea this actually went forward, you're not gonna be experiencing anything really drastically different, but procedurally, administratively, and kind of the back and forth that we have with the applicants, that's gonna look a little bit different, because an action has to take place in between each one of those rounds, where prior to that, we would just rely on emails and some of our intake systems to kind of alert the applicant that our first round is complete, and they can start working on their second submission. So, with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Henry to speak about some of the adjustments that we've identified and wanted to kind of introduce tonight, both procedurally, and then later with Jack's help, look at some of the code changes that also have, capture that process.
Hey, Matt, before you transition, one more background question. Going back to the four different types of site plans that we typically have, do we have any data on how many site plans we process and take in a year? Roughly?
By type?
Or, or just like on volume as a whole? Like, do we do 50? Do we, is it 20 to 30? Is it 50 plus? Is it 10? Is it five? Like, like directionally, it'd be helpful to know.
Someone who's not here usually likes to use two hands to answer that question. It, it does vary, and we can kind of come back with year by year, because I think there were a few years recently...
Like, we've been really busy, probably.
Much busier, right? I, I would think a five-year average, as we maybe pull that together, could be more informative, just to kind of see, okay, if there was an outlier where things really took off beyond that year, what is a good average? But a dozen, maybe, would be a reliable answer.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt. Good evening, my district chair and members of the city council. My name is Henry Zhang from planning team. Matt already have enough background, and then we just need to know that on top of the, you know, code changes proposed, Jack, while going into it, we have a, we had to adjust our procedures. So, as Matt mentioned, the real 45-day really works in reality is based on a lot of, you know, you know, prior review efforts. So, basically, what we try to emphasize here is we need to do a lot of pre-application review, even this, even though the state code doesn't really necessarily, you know, state that, you, you can do that, but I think we had to reach out to the applicant more proactively, so we're gonna try to do a lot of a pre-application, and then, at the same time, we try to start a review early, you know, as soon as they have some sketch map, we can start it, you know, review and helping them, without spending too much money, you know, before they spend too much money, we can help them to get the, you know, the right direction and the roadmap. And then the other thing we need to do is to beef up the, you know, share of the resources. We need to do a lot of, you know, information, you know, sharing beforehand. We have like, you know, checklist, we have a flow chart, but nothing has been, you know, readily on the internet. Yeah. Next slide, please. Yeah, those are the things, right, right now is on our permit page, you know, but the site plan, we, we do have a separate checklist, and then we're gonna use more graphic, like flow chart, you'll see later on, and then to make this, to get this information out. Next slide, please. The new role of the planning commission, I think that's the thing we try to build in in this new process, but there, there is something we had to be very careful. One is that the state code doesn't necessarily exclude it, the planning commission's role, but I think we, we need to have some changes right now, I mean, if the new procedure will be in place. The site plan will be continuing going to the planning commission, but given this like a condensed review time periods, and we, we're gonna do lucky enough to have one maybe commission, I mean, like commission review, and in the past, we will always give a work session and then public hearing, but under the new requirements, maybe luckily, we can like schedule one public hearing. And, and then sometime in other jurisdiction, the staff review, the designated agent is the default, that means if, like in the summertime, they cannot convene any meeting, and then automatically will go to the, you know, agent, designated agent. So, that's means in that case, well, planning commission's input will not be there. And then for the, for the meeting schedule, with, if we're lucky to have one meeting, and then we had to do a public hearing, and then that, that's the only thing we can, we can have now under the new review procedure. In the past, we have the staff report, technical staff report, very formally sent it to the planning commission. Under the new review, you know, procedure, we'll probably had to, we can send maybe some standard, you know, very brief memo, which, for example, like the letter we're sending out to the, to the, the development team. Basically, the letter will, will outline the issues, and then what's the applicable, you know, code or regulation, and then what's the next step? So, basically, that probably the written material, the staff can send it to the, to the planning commission. In term of the presentation, usually, we will be there to staff the, you know, meeting, but we will not have the, you know, formal recommendation. Maybe the applicant team will be present the case and then answer the question. And then later on, the liaison, like, for example, you know, liaison will be able to help the planning commission to, you know, put the recommendation together and send it in a timely fashion to the designated agent. In term of the notice, I believe this is our city's tradition, basically, in, in the past, planning commission's review will serve as, you know, venue for the public participation, and then we, we try to keep that tradition going, you know, as long as you have a public hearing, you should, we should send out the, the notice. Well, I think under advice of the city attorney, that any planning commission's recommendation cannot be, you know, basically influence the designated agent, because per the state code, designated agent is the one who make the final decision, and the planning commission will be on advisory road. So, those are the, yeah. Next slide, please. Basically, I covered two slides, actually. Yeah, next slide, please. Yeah. We put together a flow chart, basically tried to guide a new procedure, but you see here, the timeframe is very condensed, 40 days, and we had to shorten all the time periods. For example, like previously, DRC review, you know, two weeks, now probably just one week. But regardless, you see here, the, the purple one, all those board and commission will be advisory, so we are trying to send it, send it out as soon as we receive it and we believe is complete. And then, I think, within the whole flow chart, we, we still baking the notification, like post aside, even though legally not required, but I think that's the city's, you know, tradition, to keep everybody informed. And also, the, you see Apon notice, we try to keep those, but it's optional, I mean...
Is Apon?
Apon is a adjacent property owner notice. So, usually, we send it out, like 10 days before the public hearing, we send it out notice for anybody we seen very close vicinity of the site. So, we're basically not only post aside, we're also send out, you know, the notice, so Apon notice, but once again, those are not legally required. Actually, in the state code, there is no place for, for citizen participation, they basically take out everything, you know, so, but we try to still keep those, but the end of the day, the designated agent had to make a decision, either approve or disapprove, but if it's disapproval, you had to have a very detailed list of deficiency, and then next time, the 30-day will be kicking, you can only review those list issues, you can't add more issues on new issue. And then if the second review also denied, and then, once again, you had to give a list of issue, and then the third one is the 14 days. So, totally added up, we have 84 days review period. Just for the information purposes, the two townhouses, it's, both are by right, basically, they designed everything within the box of the zoning code, without any change, without any waiver or modification. For the first one, we finished up in 88 days. And then second...
One submission, or did they do three rounds?
Oh, they, yeah, they do. They do like two rounds, basically.
Two rounds.
Yeah, because in this, in this case, they design everything within the box, and then the, the engineer are very, I mean, the team are very familiar with the city, so they know everything. That's the case, we finished up in 88 days. For the Lee Park, it's not that, you know, quick, we finished up in 117 days. We're supposed to finish in one, two, 102 days, but, you know, since one of the commission postponed the hearing, so we had to postpone. So, that's basically my part, I think you see here, it's quite condensed, and we pretty much allow one of the round here, that means when you submitted, we have the completeness review, and then we, we let the DRC take a look, because that's the staff review committee. As Matt mentioned, those are the experts in the, you know, each discipline. So, within that flow chart, we will be able to finish one round of, you know, review and send the comments to the development team. If they're good enough, they're supposed to turn back within the, you know, that circle, and then still leave 10 days for the final review. So, this basically the flow chart. Now, I'm gonna turn to Jack to finish up the specific changes.
Okay. Thank you, Henry. Good evening, council. Jack Traynor, senior planner. Yeah, the next couple of slides, I'm gonna be talking about some key takeaways or kind of, big kind of ideas that the draft code sort of introduces or amends in the code. There's three in the staff report, I can't remember, we, we may have two slides kind of condensing them, but those are online 125, if you have the staff report. But the first one is shifting the approval authority from the planning commission to the designated agent for all site plan applications. So, again, this is, you know, the, the kind of, the biggest change that we've been talking about tonight, and each, each of the key changes I'm gonna talk about have, you know, affect various code sections. So, on the right-hand box, well, I can't see it very, very well, my eyes are so bad, but we've introduced a designated agent definition in section 48.2 of the code, and this is taken straight from the state language defining what a designated agent is. We've also amended the, the prior planning commission role in reviewing site plans to introduce that idea of them being purely advisor, advisory body in site plans reviews, and they would make their recommendation to the designated agent, that's included in section 48, 1136. And then several other process-related sections have been amended, mostly telescoping to that site plan review process, that affects the special exception site plan section, site plans generally, and the site plan review deadlines. So, again, these, these sections all basically just telescope to what the, the new site plan review process is, and so, for, for the special exception site plan, obviously, council would go through the special exception process and all of those regulations, but then the actual site plan portion would be divorced from, from that, and would then go through the site plan process like any, like any other site plan. Are the fees on here? Maybe that's the next one. Okay, man, I need to, I need to up my contact's prescription, so, yeah, the fee structure in section 1528, we've updated to reflect some, some higher fee amounts for site plans, again, sort of anticipating, well, we did some research in, in seeing that our, our site plan applications actually were, were much lower than our peers, and so, those have been amended to be a little more up-to-date and current. And then lastly, the key change I want to highlight is the, so, let me start over. The last key change addresses three components of site plan modifications that the zoning ordinance currently gives to the planning commission to waive or alter. Those have to do with site plan application requirements, so things you have to include in a site plan application. Those can actually be waived or, or modified by the planning commission. Also included are landscaping requirements and off-street parking requirements, those both, the planning commission today both has the ability to waive or modify those requirements as well. And so, those three sections have been basically been modified to reflect the designated agent. And the biggest change is actually in the landscaping division, staff found that that was the most kind of vague, I, I think, in weighing those requests, and so, staff's added more language about how to weigh and... and so staff's added more language about how to weigh and consider landscaping reduction or modification requests from what would normally be required. And then for the other two, site plan requirements and off-street parking, there was actually already some requirements in there and so those mostly have just been kind of touched up to reflect the designated agent from the planning commission. And if we go to the next slide, I think it's just the timing, schedule. So tonight's a work session on the code amendments. This is the schedule, you know, known today, or the planning commission's got its work session on the very same amendments happening Wednesday night. And then from there, we've got a first reading scheduled for October twenty-seventh, followed by the planning commission's public hearing November eighteenth. And then a second reading slash final consideration happening December eighth. So I'll either throw it back to Matt, are you going to wrap us up or?
No. That's the presentation, I think we're just trying to get feedback on kind of the first look of our approach and the specific code changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Since we still have planning commission guests here, and this used to be your role, I guess you all have comments or suggestions or feedback for the team.
You want to go?
Good luck.
I would just say like the most two, the two most important things to me are that preserving that opportunity for public engagement. So I think the staff recommendation to have this still come to the planning commission and, you know, assuming, I don't know how realistic these timelines are that we are laying out for ourselves, if it's even possible to get down to a forty-day period. I appreciate the early engagement, the idea for like, if you're, you can sort of talk to them first before you start the clock and get a lot of the, the sort of like easy fix stuff out of the way in the beginning, that, that seems like a really good change, process change generally. But yeah, so that, the one thing that was really important is that preserving that opportunity for public engagement and then the second thing is really having a clear criteria for the variances because right now that's a public discussion among all the planning commissioners and if it's just a decision that the designated agent is making, I think it's important that we have clear criteria for, for how that decision should be approached.
Can we go up to the flow chart? So where in the process does we provide for that? So should there be variance that Matt wants to talk to the planning commission about? Which circle is that?
Some of that would happen probably halfway through that flow chart. So you kind of factor in the intake process, you know, lead staff would generate a memorandum kind of explaining what's been proposed, what we were anticipating reviewing that against. And as that gets disseminated for feedback, it would be also routed to the commissions and boards. And in that, you know, one opportunity that we'll be able to fit within the forty-eight window, staff would highlight what's in the memorandum, but I think the applicant would have the burden to kind of explain what the request is, where modifications are being proposed. And I think we would have a role to kind of identify some of the criteria that are in the code changes, whether it's parking or landscape, you know, waivers and modifications. And the challenge of that meeting is while everything would be presented, staff would not have an opportunity yet to verify what's appropriate just yet. I think we are just in the middle of our review and given that a lot of these boards and commissions have fixed dates throughout the month, we can't quite control when applications are filed, it is going to feel rushed. I don't think there's any way to avoid that, but the conversation can still happen and I think with the applicant there, we can certainly hear feedback on, at least preliminarily, does the commission feel that in light of the criteria we established, is the request something that we could support? And again, back to what Henry was saying, while maybe not influencing, that feedback definitely will inform the designated agent's decisions.
So that was actually, if I can interject, one of my comments is with the fixed board and commission meetings, instead of saying, well, things can come in throughout the month, like this kind of forces that if you want to live within this window, that all applications should come in, say, the first of the month, right, in order to fit this schedule. And so I don't know whether that's informal feedback we want to share with people or like, here's the schedule of when the AB, when the planning commission meets, like if you want to hear feedback, you got to hit this cadence. I don't know from a workflow perspective whether we want two site plans coming in the first of every month, I'm just making that data up, but that essentially is what this forces. And maybe that discipline is also helpful to really, if you want to hit this timeline and you want to get feedback and you don't want to wait another cycle before the AB meets again, you got to hit this date to start the process when we start the clock.
And ideally, that would be a perfect example of what we get covered in that conceptual discussion where maybe they haven't filed and paid fees, but we have an idea, they're kind of testing with staff if it's something that's appropriate, maybe some initial comments and reactions. We could use that opportunity to highlight to them, like, planning commission only meets on the first and third Wednesday, right? How soon are you planning to file? Can we start penciling you in? Maybe by that point, we have a sense of what the agendas are, is that something we can actually accommodate? So that's something we definitely plan on coordinating and hopefully, you know, the feeling is mutual and folks actually engage us because we can't require that conceptual review, just like we can't require in between review sessions, how long it will take for an applicant to address our comments. That's actually something completely that the state code is silent on in that sometimes great applicant teams do a very good job and are quite responsive and comprehensive and others take seven rounds. We cannot control that, so.
Yeah, actually, if I could jump in there, I was wondering about that because I know, again, back to our baseball field, I know that was one of the things that you all, whoever the staff went to school, schools, I think, took and sometimes a little bit too long to get back. So like, how does that affect, how does that affect, like if the applicant is the one that's holding up the process, then what happens?
I mean, from, from some perspective, it doesn't change what happened prior to July. It's simply the semantics of rather than emailing and notifying the applicant that we've completed run round, we're waiting for you to submit your second round, there's going to have to be, based on state code requirements, a rejection that says this is not approvable, you have to resubmit, it's going to be a separate fee for resubmission, perhaps that's the incentive, right? If you don't want to spend more money. Right?
Got it.
And again, we do have a shortened window with every subsequent application. I think it's fourteen days, the third and subsequent, which does have merit because you shouldn't have new comments as this progresses. But again, it doesn't control if people are just not responding to something we flagged.
Okay. That's helpful, thank you.
Can I jump in just on the flow chart of the timing of the advisory boards and commissions? I think you're going to have to be careful with this, right? Because we don't want to invite gamesmanship either, that people are timing their applications in a way to cut out board and commission sort of advisory comments. And so, right, like-
We thought about that.
Yeah, okay. So I just, yeah.
If I may, I think we are planning to launch a site plan menu to take care of the things like Mary mentioned, you know, like you mentioned, you know, we can, we can definitely establish the window they can submit because the state code doesn't say, you know, anything about. But we had to, actually, the site plan menu is a best practice, every other jurisdiction have it, but we don't have it. So in the, in the site plan menu, we can tell, for example, like what if they cannot meet, you know, the deadline? So they will have, we're going to have to break down the site plan into like seven to eight steps and each step, we have a date tied to it. If the applicant cannot meet that day, for example, like first round of review, we send it out, the comments on the fourteenth days, they need to come back on the twenty-ninth day. If they cannot come back on the twenty-ninth day, they had to give us a waiver, they automatically waive their days. And that's very popular of my other jurisdictions. So that means the responsibility is not always on us. If you are not active within the time period, you can't meet the day, we cannot meet the forty days. So, so we're going to have that menu to taking care of this. This is administrative procedure, so we don't need to, you know, like put it into legislation.
Speedy trial, right? It's like, sure, get that in the record, but.
If I may, that's the question. I mean, you know, can we do a workaround that basically has the applicant wave his, her rights to a speedy review? I mean, is that allowed under the state code? Is it contemplated under the state code? If it's not, let's push the limit. I don't know, speaking my friends here, and thanks to staff for dealing with a really tough situation, but this is a dumpster fire. I mean, I understand the bigger picture and I want to be a team player and all that and I understand that in many parts of Virginia, they don't want to build housing and driving up from Gloucester Point when I visited with Meredith, you know, you drive through thousands of acres of farmland sprinkled with billboards that say, you know, plant crops, not houses. I mean, I understand the politics behind this, but we worked so hard here for so long to get the process that we've used in recent years to good effect, I think. And sometimes, you know, that eightieth, ninetieth, hundredth day makes the application just that much, I mean, Tarter would have gone crazy if he hadn't been able to, you know, talk about cementitious planks up until the hundred and twentieth day. But seriously, I mean, you know, we, we got good things and the point of the process is to get good development. I'm just concerned hearing, you know, how it's actually going to work, that, you know, what's going to happen is a lot of development in a lot of places is not going to get done. And somebody down in Richmond will wake up and realize, well, we intended well, but it didn't work out. And that's the politics of it, you know, the business interests and the housing interests got together and worked out a plan to expedite both of their agendas. But what's left out is communities like ours that have a forward, you know, process that gets things done in a reasonable amount of time, but in a very detailed way. I'm sorry to give such a long speech, but just last question on my end. The, so we're getting this at the planning commission Wednesday night? Okay, well, thank you for taking the time to do that. Why is that? I mean, it's sort of like you guys are planning our funeral, do I need to vote on it? Not personally here, I mean, I realize you're-
Intervention, no. Part of the reason is because, and maybe the last scheduled slide is helpful, earlier in the summer, there was an initiating resolution. We've identified in the earlier step, who will be the designated agent. And now I think we're trying to make sure we go through, because this is impacting the city code, so there are certain steps we have to take to implement that and have that be in place so we can start processing applications. So as we make our way through there, you can see on November nineteenth, there will be a public hearing with the planning commission to help adopt those zoning changes. And to get us ready for November nineteenth, we wanted to have a more informal conversation with you all this Wednesday, where we can kind of just walk through and if there are comments, that gives us plenty of time to address them, markup revisions in time for the first reading at the end of October. So the fact that there's no council meetings actually helps us if we in fact get a lot of feedback and have to kind of go backwards a little bit.
Thank you. I want a blue tie on my suit in the casket, so, you know, take extra time to get the right tie. I just-
Humor will get us through this.
It's just, I hate, I hate it for you guys and gals to have to deal with this new process. Maybe Letty wants me to be very upbeat about this, so I'll try to be optimistic that this will actually get everybody's attention. I mean, there are some cases where business applications are, it's like, you know, you've just got no business being here because it's taken seven cycles and you still can't figure out what to put the stormwater. So maybe those sort of applications will just drop off and only the serious applications will come forward. So there could be some good come of that, I guess. But I am a little puzzled as to why the planning commission itself would vote for something like this. I mean, what happens if we vote against it? Still going to happen, council's still going to have to pass it because otherwise we've got no mechanism, right? No legal mechanism, unless we just decide right now and finally, Cindy, you know, that we're going to challenge, we are going to take the lead in challenging, you know, what's going on down in Richmond and put in our legislative package that we're opposed to this, it doesn't fit with our ethos and Falls Church and we want to, we want to change.
Can I pick up on that? First of all, I was glad to see in the staff report, they're at least found a way to, to work on the planning commission and as a, you know, have an advisory roles. But I was interested in that what Mr. Duncan was saying too, was sort of more the politics of all of this. You know, is it, was this a bipartisan effort? Is this something that we could see change again? You know, we probably will have a new, a governor from a different party and elected in November and then we'll have, you know, the general assembly may flip, like, is this something that we could see flip back in two years? I mean, is it, is it a political thing or was it a bipartisan effort?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, the governor signed it, it was sponsored by two Democrats.
Okay.
Yep.
Bipartisan.
And I would say that the strong reason for it proceeding is because of the statewide perspective of local governments, a perception, delaying housing. And so they were advocating. The challenge for us is we could try to put something in, in the meantime, doubt, you got to comply with the existing state code, so council will need to do something. It was a Northern Virginia legislator who sponsored this current bill and so we'll need to work with our delegate to see if he's willing to sponsor it, a change. And this kind of information is things he's asked me to pass on, so I'm going to be giving the feedback. But the building industry is pretty strong and I'm not sure that one cycle of change will impact it. I think it will be similar to where the industry advocated to change proffers and so no locality could have a pre-conversation with anybody on proffers and then the builders realized about two years later, that was not at all helpful and actually slowed down the projects and we got the change.
Can I ask, I guess, sorry Cindy.
It'll be challenging, I think, it's not a guaranteed for sure. And we're about to start the council legislative process and so I have reached out to all the boards and commissions today to provide input and the planning commission has done one initial round of comments, but certainly additional legislative comments could be forwarded my way to bring to council.
I was just going to ask, on the legislative, so, you know, on our legislative agenda, one way to go about this, right, would be, we want everyone to revisit this, but another way to go about this is that our planning commission retained your subdivision authority through the city charter. So is there a way similarly to how we sought an amendment to the city charter for the boards and commissions, that we could potentially work the planning commission back into like needing a public hearing for the purposes of a site plan and would that then supersede solely for our jurisdiction pursuant to the charter? The whatever, you know, state code change that's been made more generally? And that like if we're making a case for ourselves of like, well, we're two square miles and we have access to applicants who are having in-person meetings with our staff and da-da-da-da-da and we normally are doing this within X window on average and really we're trying to retain public input, not change anything about how quickly we're doing this because we're generally operating within the deadline? That like, is there a charter mechanism to deal with this rather than revisiting this more broadly?
We could pursue a charter amendment and make sure site plan and subdivision are in the charter and not one in state code and one in the charter. A change in administration may help the charter amendment process because historically that's been harder, we still need to have the bill sponsored, so we would still need to be coordinating with our representatives. And on the legal side for charter over state code, I'll defer to the attorney.
I mean, theoretically, that's an option. And I, as to the, kind of the likelihood of success of that approach in terms of asking for that to be in our charter, I'm not, I guess I feel a little bit pessimistic about that because I think one of the reasons, it's, it's not just the timeline, the deadlines that are important. I think the reason the deadlines are so short is because there is not supposed to be public input. And it is supposed to be a purely technical review where you're reviewing what's on the drawing and what's in the ordinance and does it match or does it not match? And you don't really, there's not a, there's not a usefulness to public opinion in that case because it's a technical review and in fact, public opinion can cause an arbitrariness there that is not supposed to be there. So, so while your solution is a technically, it's a technically accurate that if it were in the charter, we wouldn't be subject to these, the state code rules that we're looking at, the fact that they created such a tight deadline and they've, you know, made the changes they made signaled to me that they would not favor an approach like- like that. But, you know, I know, and we are a small jurisdiction and maybe they would think it's harmless.
And there are jurisdictions.
One, we already have like one that we're, like, you know, we're only compliant with half of what they were trying to accomplish if you take that sort of view anyway, right? Like if we already have the subdivision authority staying with planning commission.
Right. A subdivision though, subdivision authority has much less, um, it's, it's a much drier type of submission and document. It really is about where are your lot lines? And it's, um, not really about what you're building and where it's going. And so it's much more, there's much less, um, policy implication and, you know, I mean, I guess what I want to say is the opportunity for, for the public to influence a subdivision plat is much less than the opportunity to influence a site plan.
Go back to the planning commission.
Yeah, I think if, you know, if our codes were, were kind of up to date in terms of our, you know, incorporating our latest policy thinking, then, you know, site plans would be just a ministerial kind of thing. But I think part of our challenge is, and the reason we get variance requests is because our codes aren't up to date. And, you know, the developers come in and say, hey, you know, you had a twenty-year-old code there, and I don't think we can, we can manage this in today's world, so we need to ask for a variance. So, anyway.
I had a quick question. Matt, do you feel like, I know that generally you all have sort of been hitting this timeline, but do you feel that staff-wise, you'll be okay once this is all, this new process is implemented?
I do. Part of that is just simply quantifying the amount of applications we average in a typical year. We've actually had a few cases that started before this went into effect, and we're kind of already starting to think about how that would have to be approved. So, um, I think everybody's been preparing, and we have a pretty strong team that's looked at it several different ways, working with Sally and making sure that, you know, we, technically comply with what we have to, and then look for opportunities where we can customize, um, given the applications we have and the process we have to go through. So I feel pretty good.
Thank you.
Yeah. If I may, I just want to share another piece of information. We are involved in APA VA. There is a legislative working group. And then last work session, there are forty localities over there. Basically, they attend that meeting. Uh, I think the, the message is very clear, this had to be changed next year. You know, because a lot of locality like us, we had to scramble to change the code. And then a lot of believe forty-day not a real date, basically. So, um, they are working on trying to get the idea together and then just to try to change this bill, this two bill in the next legislative, you know, session, that'll be 2026.
Again, once again, credit to our staff for, I went to that APVA meeting, and Henry was the only person who stood up during the Q and A and said, excuse me, excuse me, this forty-day thing, what are we doing? And remarkably, hardly anybody in the room seemed to have put it on their radar screen. I mean, they have now, but it, it really is an extraordinary case of something getting slipped through without even the professionals in the field seeming to be up on it. Anyway, staff gets credit for bringing it to the attention of the whole three hundred people in the room and getting something going on it.
I think it was also because some localities already have site plans done by staff and not by planning commission. So it's, it's a change for certainly some people like us, but it's not the case across the commonwealths.
That's true, yeah. It's true.
Yeah, actually, that, that was my comment. I'm going to defer my questions and comments to Wednesday, but I would like to have on Wednesday a good discussion of how these other jurisdictions are handling the site approval, like Arlington and Fairfax, which I understand already give significant authority to staff for the approval process. And maybe if there, there could be a good discussion about the pros and cons of having staff do that and the challenges of, of that and how that process works already compared to what we've just laid out.
Yeah, we're happy to prepare for that. I will say just for the benefit of this conversation, scale has a lot to do with that. So we, while we can probably research and provide some context of what other jurisdictions are doing, um, the scale of the jurisdiction and the quantity of applications drive everything. Because there's some jurisdictions that handle five, ten, fifteen more than applications than we do on a given year, uh, just purely because of their size and demand for development. They don't have the luxury to dictate how some of those reviews take place. There's not enough people you can hire to manage that workload. We don't have that problem, and I think that opens up some other opportunities where I think we can leverage for additional public engagement because of the volume that we have to maintain. If, if we were getting a hundred applications a year, that would not be on the table. I think we would have to be much more conservative in terms of how we address this.
Okay. Any other final planning commission comments before we go back to council? I know we jumped all over the place, so, Mary Beth.
Thanks, Lydie. Can you go back to the, the different types of plans, the first slide? Four types, right? So all of these have the same timeline?
They do, because the wording in the code language simply refers to site plans.
Okay. So that's one que, if, if this, if we are going to ask to have a revisitation of this next year, is, could that be one of the things we ask? Is the different things need a different length of timeline?
I thought it was different depending on whether it's single use or mixed use.
So the typologies are correct. It's, but within that, you can see in the first two categories, there was a single-use examples, the third one and sometimes the fourth could be mixed use, uh, where the time does change. I think what's critical here is that, uh, in either case, what I think is just generally good practice, uh, and again, we're looking for some lessons learned where we can be, you know, better at the process moving forward, um, whether this stays or in a year we're back to where we were in 2024. There is, I think, a good practice in terms of making sure that the first round captures everything we can, um, highlight to the applicant, and that we're not discovering new comments with second and third rounds. We're simply working to minimize what's left and make sure they addressed everything. So those are, I think, things everybody wants to achieve, uh, and that will be kind of making sure that we can continue, whether it's in this context or whatever we have to face next summer.
On the flow chart, where does the stormwater review fit in?
So that is part of the DRC distribution. If you actually go back to, flow chart might be, might not be the easiest thing to read, but if earlier, I think it's slide three maybe, we're going to look at who's involved in the review. There we go. On the left side, you can see all the various subject matter experts. So the engineers, uh, that are working with the city would be involved in that review. So we have about fifteen to twenty folks that receive a copy of these plans, and all of them are asked to submit comments that we then consolidate, review, and share with the applicant.
Okay. But because th, this process doesn't, as Sally said, have as much opportunity for community engagement, those SMRT meetings over time have been meetings where neighbors could come and raise their concerns, as well as the letter that goes out later about changes and a hearing. Would there be an opportunity for neighbors to get involved in the stormwater part of it, or is that all now staff?
I think some of that does shift mostly to staff. I'm, I'm trying to think of what board or commission the community would have a chance to-
It's not, it wasn't a board or commission, right? Those SMRT meetings are staff and applicant and neighbors.
And that's been a real source of frustration because that is a ministerial act. We have to follow the law. We have to follow the state code and the city code, and we really can't take public comment on them, and yet we invite people in. So that has been kind of an awkward procedure. It's done, we try to present at the beginning of the meeting, this is for informational purposes, um, but we have to, this is a ministerial act, and so we kind of give that script at the beginning of, of those meetings.
But even if somebody with that topic in mind, let's say that's their priority, maybe they live next to the site that has an application in, and they show up to a planning commission meeting in that new process, the frustrating part is even if they have a chance to speak or be heard, staff will not have a chance to present their findings just yet. So what, what we're doing is we are essentially responding to that application live and relying on the applicant to provide the analysis. That will present a very different environment.
It, yeah.
And when that process yields, what happens is what happened to me, they go to the council member who lives two doors down and expect the council member to stop the new house from being developed because it's going to flood the neighbor's house next door. I mean, it's just, they've got no place else to go, so they call-
Right.
They call the city council. So good luck to you.
And then my last question is just, well, two more. What are the consequences if we don't hit those deadlines? Are there fines from the state? Are there, like, if we just can't hit a forty-day, for whatever reason, the AAB hasn't met or staff have too many and they can't complete it in forty days? Is, you know, with a FOIA request, there's always a opportunity for an extension. Is that in this part of the code now? Or we just have to meet it and there's no-
I'm going to let Sally start, and I'm going to add some-
It's considered approved. If you not act within the timeframe, it's considered approved, so they can go directly to get the permit.
Oh.
That's if nothing gets sent, but I think what's perfectly reasonable is that even, let's say, one of the boards or commissions was not able to meet, right?
Right.
Unique filing that conveniently the applicant was advised to do. We would still have a very careful and mindful awareness of the clock. And within that forty-day window, there would be some letters sent to the applicant with our comments, whatever they may be at that time. So I don't think there's any chance for that letter to not be sent. And in reality, when you look at that forty-day window, that's probably the most realistic expectation, that absent of a perfect application that has zero comments. I'm not sure how many of those we get a year, but most likely what's going to happen is we will at least issue that letter, and the applicant will start reviewing and addressing those comments. I doubt they'll be in a position to submit a second one, a second round before the forty-day window ends. But I do feel that at minimum, even if we're still waiting to hear from some folks, that letter could be issued, and we would make sure it gets delivered within the forty-day window.
Thanks. And then just one last question about that, the clock. Is there a way to say the clock is, it starts when you get the fee, and then staff works on it? If you send it back to the client, they don't get it back to you in time? Does the clock stop for part of that time? Or are we just running forty, forty-five days?
I've not seen anything in the state language that says there's a mechanism to stop the clock.
Okay.
I don't know if others have.
Right. I think in reality, we had to ask them to waive the, the-
So it's a waiver, so?
Yeah. The waiver had to be in place. Otherwise, we'll be liable. I think the best practice, if they can't meet the deadline, you had to wait, you know, the, the responsibility is on you, it's not on us.
Right, right. Okay. Thanks.
Just to quickly tag on to that, we should track all of this, right? So like some massive spreadsheet or whatever we want to track that says, came in on this date, here's how much time we took during this part of the process, we sent it back, we had ten minutes, ten days of waiting time here back from the applicant. So at least by the end of this year, we could say, in this new process, here's what failed, here's what got through, here's where it got stuck in the process? Because that could be really informative to, you know, should we want to have a conversation with Richmond about it? Without that data right now, I don't think we, it's fair to just say we don't like it, so.
Yeah, luckily, our team has been tracking a lot of that, so it's, all of that groundwork is already in place, so we, we'll definitely have something ready for that.
Okay. Other comments, Erin?
I just, um, I guess a question about the waivers and the modifications, because Ms. Comant brought up, you know, that oftentimes there isn't a criteria, and I see in the draft code language, like the, you know, red line includes or imports criteria from somewhere. So I guess where, you know, where did that come from? Were we borrowing from like neighbors' codes in terms of what made it in for, for example, like the landscaping modifications? And did, were there judgments about what you like did or didn't include? So I guess I would just say for the planning commission, like the things that you're normally thinking of, because this comes to you and not to us, when you're reviewing the code language or looking for Wednesday, my hope would be that you're also seeing like, are there important things in there that are recurring in your mind? And not to like question your professional judgment, but just to make sure from a like citizen-community perspective that those things are reflected in the kind of waiver modification criteria.
Yeah, and we, we can certainly highlight, uh, Wednesday night and moving forward exactly where some of this stuff came from, but we do view it as one of the healthier outcomes of this process where I think transparency is beneficial to everyone, whether it's myself, planning commission. Limiting the perception that we're making arbitrary decisions, case by case, I think really helps everybody, allows us to set maybe clearer precedents moving forward. So to me, I think, even if it gets evolved even further, particularly as it relates to parking and landscaping, which are related, oftentimes, case by case, we're, are making a judgment call of how critical is parking to that particular applicant's use versus some goals that we have for vegetation and then, you know, tree canopy. You know, and there's going to be some winners and losers depending on what the case and location might be and maybe the pattern of decisions that year. So that's something we definitely want to track, and these criteria, I think, help get us there, even if they're not imperfect.
Yeah. And, go ahead.
I was going to say, I think the positive change of that is going, like Tim said, going back to the code and let, getting our code up to date. I know we're talking about parking and we're talking about tree canopy, like in the next couple of months, so it might be a forcing mechanism for council to make sure we're updating our policies on those.
I guess that, yeah, that was the point I was going to make too, that like, to the extent you're seeing so many waivers or modifications or variances or whatever they are, right? That, that there should be a default where people are meeting what our code is because our code reflects our policy judgments about what it is that we want. And so if we're looking at the code properly, then you should, right, you should be in fewer positions of needing to actually apply your waiver modification variances than you are. And then, I guess, I guess a follow-up question on that was that, do we treat the landscape like buffer differently than the tree canopy requirement? Where like, do we allow modifications to the tree canopy requirement? Like, we haven't had a tree canopy requirement in the site plans. And so, like, I think there's a judgment call, or maybe it needs to be prescriptive as to, like, are we allowing tree canopy modifications? Or do you have to hit your tree canopy and you can figure out what the landscape buffers are? But, um, so like, so I just want to put that out there for the discussion because there probably is a, like, judgment call that needs to work its way into the code as much as you're going to be exercising judgment as the designated agent.
I, I'm happy to do it. What ends up happening, and I want to make sure I get this point because we get this a lot, there isn't a scenario out there where you can perf, perfect the code that addresses every single site out there. So we will, I don't want to set expectations that we will never be able to reach. You're going to need to have the flexibility from a planning perspective, from a political perspective, to have modifications available because sites are so unique. And I think the debate we're going to get into this year and next year is just between parking and vegetation. Sometimes, you know, we're sacrificing vegetation and tree canopy because we want to get as close to our parking minimums as possible. There may be an instance where an applicant really understands their use, and I don't need that much parking. I'm happy to give you some extra trees and vegetation back. So we're going to have to have this kind of back and forth relationship between just those two elements, and there are others involved as well. But as an example, I feel like we can perfect it to a point, and then I think we're still going to have to have some objective, you know, criteria for modifications because of just how unique and, you know, those sites may, may be from, you know.
That totally makes sense, and I think that's where like the advisory role comes in and is especially helpful because people have seen, you know, the uses before, they know it's there, or, you know, you're going to have to like go back and, um, cross-reference like what may be adjacent or what isn't already meeting the tree canopy requirement next to it, and like what the, what the judgment call may be per site based on like the surrounding uses that won't necessarily be reflected in the, um, you know, waiver modification criteria stuff unless you maybe write in that you want the applicant to do that work for you to say like, what, you know, what is the adjacent tree canopy? So that you're not having to do it in your forty days and they have to do it instead.
Right, and, you know, our policies and priorities change. You know, later this fall, we're going to be coming back with, you know, tree canopy standards. But at the same time, we, we're going to always find ourselves in this game of getting ahead or keeping up with the development community who will use every opportunity to kind of maximize their- who will use every opportunity to kind of maximize their site. And I think our, you know, requirements have to keep up with that and adapt. So, and that may be an annual exercise, so.
Could I, could I add something to the conversation? Which is, one strategy here, because our subdivision powers are in our charter, would be to transfer as much as we have under site planning into subdivision as we legally can. And it does look like we might have some room to like move stormwater management and other types of review from site plan to subdivision. Um, which would save you some time on the forty day clock and would also put it back into the charter section where the planning commission has more, um, review power.
You guys don't have any more? Okay. Thank you to staff for reacting to this. I guess I'll say the same thing I said when we first talked about this a couple of months ago. I would caution us to not automatically say we don't like this, or try to circumvent it, or do a charter change. I think we need more data, especially if we're talking about ten site plans a year, two hands, right? And if we think that staff right now can reasonably handle it, I'd like to see how this goes. Like, to know whether we can hit the deadlines, whether this actually forces the applicant to be more disciplined and submit better things at the first submission. Whether it forces us to be more transparent, whether there are things we need to clean up in our code. I think there's a lot of good that can come out of it. And so I guess I want to reserve judgment. I want to see how this goes. I did look it up. HB three six six zero passed ninety-seven to one in the House and thirty-nine to zero in the Senate. So clearly had bipartisan support. I think the policy intent is to make sure that things do move through the process and we don't sit on an application. That said, a lot of what I think Henry talked about in terms of process improvement, so kind of the site plan manual, the checklist, the flow charts, the more transparency, sounds very akin to what we want to do with permitting, sounds very akin to what we've tried to do with the SE process. So the whole bring the boards and commissions together early on for that pre-application discussion before they submit is generally good best practice, I think we found, right? The earlier talk, before you start spending money, before you start the clock. Like, we have found that to be a really fruitful part of a process improvement we've done with the SE process. So I would encourage us to be open-minded and see whether this, what do we call it? The pre-application meeting can be beefed up so that people are better prepared going in before the clock starts. And see how this helps the process. Because I don't think anyone wants to sit on this more than we need to. I think we all have the same shared goals here. And so I would just encourage us again to be open-minded, monitor how this goes before we pass judgment and decide that we want to circumvent the process. I am curious about the site plan fees. I think you all mentioned that our fees were a little out of sync with what other jurisdictions are. So I don't know whether we have that handy, but whether that's a council action or whether that's a, it is a council action. Okay, so I would like benchmarking, I guess, to know how they compare. I just quickly put it in ChatGPT and it said we're way off. Who knows whether that's accurate? So I would like staff's assessment of that. Because I think what we call site plans here is different than what Arlington calls site plans. And so they may not be doing apples-to-apples comparison. But I would be interested in that to make sure that we are number one, fair, and that we are paying for the staff time. But also that we aren't prohibitively high as well and impacting small-scale developers compared to the big guys who can afford that too. I want to make sure that we put that equity lens on what we may be putting on our site plans. But appreciate the discussion, appreciate planning commission sticking around. And just again, ask for everyone, be open-minded and see how this goes. And if it really is bumpy and we don't like it, we can certainly revisit. But I guess until we have that data and have the experience of where things get held up, I don't want us to look like we're just saying we don't like it because it's a change. So. Thank you all.
We don't have a meeting next Monday.
So we cancel the Wednesday. So I don't know whether we want to talk any scheduling things or just bypass till next week.
It's pretty, I mean, I looked at it online. It seems pretty well flushed out all the way through January. Just generally.
I just didn't know people had.
I mean, unless you weren't at the meeting unless there's anything you wanted to, our last mayor's meeting. Because Andy did a very good job of taking us through it, but.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have no updates of any, you know, of great significance. We did, we have been trying to pay attention to the length of the meetings. And so you did, you may have seen some evolution in the last two weeks where things have been smoothed out a little bit more. And we'll continue to try to do that.
So we're not back together till October sixth?
That's right.
So that's like two and a half, three weeks, three weeks, two weeks?
We have a fifth.
Because there's fifth, yeah, so there's like three weeks in there.
So we have a GovOps committee meeting. We do have a budget and finance committee meeting. Both of those are in the last week of September.
Justine's gonna lead the budget and finance committee.
On October third?
On October third, yeah.
Uh, do we, I guess we are talking a little schedule.
Well, I was jumping to VML and whether or not, if those, I don't know if our, like, if I'm supposed to be making my plans? Or if that's already been handled with Celeste? Or, um, I haven't seen any email traffic on that.
You did that back in the summer.
Celeste emailed back in the summer, I think.
It was a long time ago.
Yeah, that's what I mean, like, recent, so like, I just don't know.
I can check in with the city clerk, but she would be.
Coming up and we were making the actual plans, like.
Yeah, she would be coordinating it for you.
Are we all hotel or what?
I don't know. Yeah. Check with Celeste.
Yeah, I can check with her tomorrow and ask her to reach out to you all.
Okay.
So maybe if you could just say these are the people I have, you know.
Confirmed.
For and registered for VML.
Who is going? Who is going just out of this group?
I think I said it was, so maybe I'm wrong.
I'm, I'm hotel, but not registration yet. And I'm sort of seeing how it plays out.
Okay. Thank you to staff on big weekend. Festival was.
It was really good. It was really good.
Well done this year with some nice process improvements and the double lines and tickets. I think it's a lot less waiting for very popular things. That was nice to see.
And I also wanted to add, I, on the thanks, on the run for the schools on Sunday. You know, we've used police on motorcycles the last, for the last twenty years. And this year, we moved to the bike and the e-bike. And it just felt very false church and very great. You know, some of the kids were like, where are the motorcycles? And, and he replied, well, the carbon emissions and the carbon footprint of the motorcycles is minimized by me being on the bike. And it was just such a great false church moment. So I really, I really appreciated that.
Well, speaking of carbon emissions, Parking Day is Thursday, right? So I think we're taking the space in front of the library.
That is correct.
And transforming it to an alternative use. So reimagine what parking spaces could be used for. So thank you to planning staff for spearheading that.
And there's also the employee picnic, right?
That's on Friday at noon. All are welcome to that.
I also wanted to thank Kurt and then the ESC, or I should have thanked Tim while he was here for putting out all the information about Fall Festival on the geothermal. There were drawings and schematics and I don't know how many people stopped and talked to them, but just to have that out there and be like, oh, that's why this was torn up for however long. That was great. We'd asked for that and that was a great opportunity to do it. And Kurt did a little social media video about it and which I think a lot of people saw. So thank you for, to them and you all for following through on that.
You had to see it to go to the bathroom.
Yeah.
Lots of people probably passed by.
Get your tickets.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it shouldn't be a one and done, but it was a great start. You know, I think we should do it a couple of times.
But I, I just want to, I know I saw Taya there, like, there are so many staff on, at the festival. So thank, just extend our thanks to everyone. I know it was a long, hot day, so thank you. And, and I, on that note, I just said, and I know why I had suggested this to you and to Danny, but having sort of like a drink station or some easier way to access water, so we don't have to wait. Like, parents are trying to wait in line to get a ticket to get water for their kid and all that. So whether it's just big jugs of water with little cups, or whether we have the Boy Scouts selling them for a dollar apiece or something. I don't know, I was actually talking to, um.
No selling plastic water bottles.
Okay, well, whatever. But I, I was talking to Rebecca's brother. Yes. And he said that in the past, they were allowed to sell the drinks with cash and not the tickets. And then that changed this year. So maybe we could go back to that is that you could walk up and say, hey, could I buy a can of soda or something here, you know, instead of having to wait in that ticket line? So that was, that was the only feedback I had, but I thought it was a great day.
I envisioned the big, you know, football, orange Gatorade, or orange, I shouldn't say Gatorade, and the little paper cups that can get recycled and, yeah.
No single-use plastics if possible.
And I'd just like to point out that I went to the movies in False Church Friday night and I ran into Mary Tarter in the movies too. And I was like, look at us, we're in the movie theater. After all those years, ten years later, sitting in this room, yes.
Okay, well, I guess there's nothing else schedule-wise, so enjoy three weeks off. Seems like a lot. It's like summer again.
He did not, he was seeing something else.
Oh, really?
Yeah.